Good evening, everyone. Please take your seats. Good evening. Please take your seats. All right, let's take your seats, please. Please take your seats. They're gonna move forward for the meeting this evening. Thank you all. All right, good evening to everybody. Today is Wednesday, May 7th, 2025. I now call to order the second session of the 2025 Annual Town Meeting for the town of Stoughton. This meeting is now in session. Please be seated. Okay. Okay, yep. I gotta ask Mr. Anokian to make an announcement about the phones.
Hello, Mr. Moderator. Thank you very much. The opportunity to make this announcement, public service announcement. I want to let everyone know that this meeting is being broadcast live by SMAC and recorded for future viewing entertainment. And if you could all please silence your phones, that'd be greatly appreciated. If you have an Apple phone, there might be a switch on the side. If you don't have an Apple phone, I can't help you, but please silence your phones and have a great night. Thanks.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. All right, this meeting is being held in person at the Stoughton High School Auditorium at 232 Pearl Street. As Mr. Anokian said, the meeting's being broadcast live through Stoughton Media Services Corporation and also being recorded for future broadcasting. Please rise and stand as you are able and join me in pledging allegiance to our flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Please be seated. All right, I'm gonna ask for announcements this evening. You may have an announcements. Carmel Druze, our deputy moderator.
Carmel Druze, precinct five. I just have a quick announcement that if you feel like you have not spent enough time in this room this week, this weekend is the Stoughton High School Spring Musical. They're performing The Wiz Friday night and Saturday night at seven and Sunday at three. So you might see some familiar faces of the director, Mr. Hallack, who's not here right now because he's helping them rehearse, who runs our soundboard, and several of the theater tech kids, students, sorry, help with various things throughout town meeting. We have an incredible theater department, state award-winning theater department here, and so I promise you it will be much more entertaining than this. There will be much more singing and dancing, I can promise you, than town meeting. But if you're looking for something to do this weekend, I encourage you to come and see The Wiz, like I said, Friday and Saturday at seven or Sunday at three. Thanks.
Thank you very much, Carmel. At this time, before we move forward, I'd like to introduce our state senator, Bill Driscoll. Invite him down to the podium for a few remarks. I saw him earlier. There he is. Senator Driscoll?
Good evening. Thank you, Moderator Mullen, Deputy Moderator Druze, Town Minister Colter. Good to see you again, my former colleague in the legislature, select town, select board, our town clerk, and all of you town meeting members. Thank you for giving me a few minutes. I'll be brief. I know you have a full agenda in front of you. I wanted to say hello and introduce myself to somebody I've met before. Recently sworn in in January as state senator. That includes district with Stoughton and succeeding Walter Timothy in that role. And I've served as state rep for Milton and Randolph for the eight years before that. Again, I appreciate the opportunity to speak. I'd like to just make a few key points about how I try to work. Obviously, you make decisions here as a town administratively or as a select board and here in this room as town meeting members. And my policy as a state rep continues as a state senator, which is that if the select board sends a home rule petition or you as a body send a home rule petition forward, I'll do my part when it reaches my desk in the legislature to advance that in terms of the will of this body. So that's my policy for you and look forward to work with you on those issues that are sent forward. It's budget season on Beckett Hill, and tomorrow we have a supplemental budget, which I'll talk about in a second, for the fair share amendment. But the senate budget was recently released and in there for Stoughton, Chapter 70, education money, just over $31 million. Government aid is at $4 million. And so it's a same money, Chapter 70, that was in the House budget, so we feel confident that that number's gonna survive. And we increased the, in terms of level funded, what the House did on the government aid. So hopefully we'll keep level funded. As you know, it's a very uncertain time with the federal environment down in DC, and so we're kind of bracing for impact and what the economy could look like going forward, but we are trying to at least level fund going forward. For the supplemental budget, that is, it's the fair share amendment, also known as the millionaire's tax. I filed an amendment that I'm hopeful that will succeed for $180,000 to go toward school building costs for your project that's ongoing. So that's in for tomorrow. We're voting, taking that up, debating it tomorrow in the senate, and hopefully we'll be successful in that effort. And in closing, my door is always open. If you, your neighbors, your families, coworkers have issues with a state agency, you feel like you're getting the runaround, you're not getting an answer, please reach out. Don't hesitate to reach out. We have a way to liaise with the state agencies, whether it's the Registry of Motor Vehicles, Department of Employment, Public Health, and so on, to make sure that you at least get an answer. The answer, you know, might be no, but we'll find who's responsible to get back to you and make sure that they are being responsive. And the same, any time you reach out, we try to find answers and be responsive on issues, whether it's advocacy for our legislation or something else. And so my official website is mynamebilledriscolljr.com. We try to update every few weeks and we certainly will the next year and a half as the session continues and as things are presented to us, like budget season, we'll have updates over the next few weeks on that. And it's a great, great honor and privilege to work with the town and to represent the town up at the state house, and I look forward to our work together, our collective work in government. And please, again, don't hesitate to reach out. It can be helpful. So thank you again, Mr. Moderator, for having me, and good luck with the rest of your town meeting.
Thank you very much, Senator Bill Driscoll. Okay, just a couple of quick announcements by the moderator. We're here to do the town's business. We can discuss, debate, and vote on the articles. Please conduct yourselves professionally and with civility. Obviously, again, please silence your phones. Just wanna remind everybody, I should also mention, we might have a few people that weren't here on Monday evening. I believe Chair of the School Committee, Chris Shannon, you're over here. Okay, and Joseph McChrisky, member of the select board, is right here. And I believe everybody else was, oh, I'm sorry, and Kate Federoff, our town council this evening, from me, Talman and Costa, right? Thank you. Okay, see if we can shorten some of that, that firm name up a little bit. Okay, and everybody else was, I believe, was here. Welcome again, everybody. All right, I just wanna remind everybody, on Monday evening, May 5th, we did essentially, actually, let me back up a little bit. Are there any town meeting reps that have not been sworn in yet? If you haven't been sworn in, please raise your hand. Otherwise, we're gonna move forward. All right, before we start conducting our business, we need to ascertain whether we have a quorum to proceed with the annual town meeting. I gotta call on the precinct chairs to get a count from each precinct. Are we ready, town clerks? Okay, precinct one, John, excuse me, Juan Fox. Seventeen, precinct one. Precinct two, George Stalinski. Seventeen for precinct two. Precinct three, Matthew Callis. Eighteen for precinct three. Precinct four, Julie Gito. Nineteen for precinct four. Precinct five, Carmel Druze. Thirteen for precinct five. Precinct six, Robert Kirby. Eighteen for precinct six. Precinct seven, Diane Dolan. Twelve for precinct seven. And precinct eight, David Sheehan. Fourteen. Fourteen for precinct eight. Okay, give us a few minutes to do the calculations. All right, this evening, we have 128 town meeting reps present, and our quorum is 85, so we have enough town meeting reps here present to do our business. All right, I believe the first order of business is to test the clickers. Okay, before you vote, remember, one, yes, two, no, three, abstention. Whatever your button that you press is gonna register, please vote now. Okay, if anybody had any problems with the clickers, just come down front and see one of the people at the town clerk's office. Okay, are you good? Okay, we have calculation of 121 responded on the clickers. Okay, we're gonna move forward. Okay, just a couple of notes. Procedural motions were moved on and voted on Monday, May 5th, and they remain in effect. Just wanna say that before we go back to the budget, discussing departments and the holds, Monday, we voted and passed a procedural motion to take up as a first order of business this evening, you may recall, which was Article 46, Stoughton Equal Opportunity Committee bylaw, which appears on 67, page 67 of the Warren Books. Return to page 67. You have to use the microphone, Jim. Excuse me. Right. Right. Did everybody vote on the clickers? Anybody did not vote? Can we set it up one more time? We'll set this up one more time, okay? Wait till the moment to vote. Once I get the call to vote, I'll let you know. Not on the screen yet. Okay. You ready? Okay, we're ready to vote. Soon as it comes up on the screen, please vote. Vote now. One, two, or three? Your clickers.
So our technology director is reminding us that you can look on the back of your clicker and find your number, and then you could see it changing color when you're voting. So if your color, it won't indicate what your vote is, but if yours is still showing a dark gray square rather than showing a bright color, then it's, your vote is not being registered. So you wanna let us know about that as quickly as possible so we can try to address it.
Still short. Is everybody, anybody has not voted? Yeah. Did anybody step out of the room while we, no, she's getting her clicker now. Yeah, good try. All right, let's move on. Let's see how things go. All right. Otherwise, we're gonna get stuck here all this evening. All right. All right. Do you have a point of order?
Yes, please.
Could you identify yourself, please?
Johna Rosenblatt.
You have to speak up very loud.
Johna Rosenblatt.
Okay, and what precinct?
Oh, precinct seven. I'm sorry.
Point of order? What is it?
Yes, my point of order is I'd like to make a motion to table Article 46, please.
I'm sorry, what's the intention? It's out of order? So
I'm sorry?
Your motion right now is out of order.
Oh, but you asked me if I had something.
Well, I asked you. I thought it was something we do regarding some other.
So I have to wait until you mention it first.
Right. Okay. Thank you. Come on, so their point of order is out of order. Not gonna take that. All right, Article six now on page 67. Okay, Deborah Roberts, I recognize you to make a motion.
Thank you very much, Mr. Moderator.
Let me say, excuse me, Deborah. First, we, what we do, what we learn in the past is with amended motions, before you make the amended motion, make the motion from the book. We have that on the screen, and then we go through a process of amending the motion. Okay? Just wanna make sure everybody follows that. Okay, so excuse me for interrupting you.
That's quite all right. I'm reading from the book. The proposed motion that the town vote to amend the town of Stoughton's general bylaws to add a new chapter, Chapter 44, entitled "Stoughton Equal Opportunity Commission," as set forth in a document entitled "2025 Proposed Stoughton Equal Opportunity Commission Bylaw," on file with the town clerk's office and included in the appendix here, too.
Okay, is there a second? We second it over here? George Stalinski. Seconded by George Stalinski.
Do I make my motion now, then?
Hold on, please don't interrupt. I'll read the municipal regulations report here. Municipal regulations voted eight, zero, zero, if I read that, eight, zero, zero, to refer Article 46 to town meeting. Okay, now, hold on a minute. I wanna hear the motion. The motion was made and seconded now. Do you have a point of order on the motion?
Yes, I do. I wanna make a motion to table Article 46.
Is there a is there a second on that? Just bear with me for one second. All right, I believe the, what was the motion to?
To table it.
Table it. Okay, motion to table it requires a two-thirds vote. Okay?
Excuse me, Mr. Moderator.
Please identify yourself.
Carolyn Campbell, precinct four. Isn't it the practice to have a presentation on an article before we introduce motions to table and besides the speaker asked for a point of order, which was not to make a motion?
Excuse me, hold on, everybody. I just gotta get clarification from town council. There was a motion, and there was another motion. I gotta ask town council for clarification.
So regardless of practice and all of that, a motion to table is a two-thirds majority vote. It's not debatable. If you wanna debate the merits or hear the presentation, you would vote that motion down and then let it proceed in the normal course.
Okay. All right, all right. Now, the motion from the town meeting representative is to lay it on the table, requires two-thirds. To lay it on the table. Just give us a moment here. And please don't vote until I give you the signal. Signal will be something like this or something.
And, Mr. Moderator?
Okay, just people, my deputy moderator asked me if I could clarify what the yes and no vote mean. A year, the motion is to lay Article 46 on the table. It requires a two-thirds vote. If you're laying on the table, if a vote, a yes vote means it will be, if it passes, you're laying it on the table till someone takes it off the table later on during the meeting. A no vote means we proceed with the next course of the business, which is, will be to discuss Article 46. Okay? All right, so let's, let's go ahead and take the, are we ready? We are ready? Okay, we can vote now. One, two, or three, which is yes, no, or abstain. We have a nice vote. Okay, motion fails. Announce the vote. Forty-four, yes. Eighty-two, no. Two, abstention. Motion to lay it on the table fails. All right, so we're gonna proceed back to Article 46. Ms. Roberts, would you like to do a presentation?
Yes, Mr. Moderator. Just one second, please.
Yeah, sure. Take your time.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, and through you to town meeting. Thank you very much for the opportunity to present Article 46. I wanted you to know right up front that there were some edits made to the, not to the motion, but to the body of the bylaw, which is in the backup section on the booklet two. The spirit and soul of the meet and the intent did not change. Said another way, the sum and substance did not change. If you could turn to the document that you picked up on the table, outside table, or you downloaded from the virtual table, I can walk you through what some of the edits were to show you it was not material and content. Page one, purpose and mission did not change, and that is Section 44 dash one. Forty-four dash two, membership did not change. What did change was on page two. First paragraph changed should to will. Second paragraph, where it says, "A requirement for appointment shall be the individual's interest in and passion for diversity, equity, and inclusion," that was removed. It was replaced by "fair treatment and inclusion." In that same paragraph, where you see the word demographic, it now says data, so it's data analysis. In that same paragraph, development was removed, community development was added, communication was removed. And then down to the duties, that's in Section 44 dash three, those bullet points were removed and replaced by assess residents' ability to assess and benefit from relevant town services. Bullet two, document opportunities to increase residents' sense of belonging within Stoughton. Bullet three, identify and track key metrics that describe Stoughton's designation as a welcoming community. Next bullet, remain informed of relevant tools, resources, and best practices other municipalities have used to successfully increase inclusion and belonging of its residents. And then the final bullet on this page, provide expertise and recommendations to relevant town agencies and committees to improve inclusion and belonging of Stoughton residents. So that means the bullets that started with gather firsthand, next bullet, this was removed, providing training for committee members, that was removed. Facilitating discussions was removed. Identifying ways to promote was removed. Working in conjunction was removed. Providing evidence of systemic racism was removed. Developing strategies and tools, removed. Delegating a committee member, removed. Assisting the select board, removed. Delegating a committee member, removed. The next two paragraphs, which start with periodically, it, in the sentence, if you read far to the right, it has the word brief. Brief was now rearranged to start that paragraph in both places. And going to the final page, bullet point that starts with annually, added the words at fiscal year end, and in that same first sentence, the words report with a was removed. So now it reads a written summary of activities. Those were the changes. Also, I would like to explain to you a little bit of history, how we began. And I think this is very important because it allows for some context of where, how we started. Back in year 2020, I worked closely with Christine Howe, and Christine Howe was the chair of the select board at that time. And we worked collaboratively to apply for a grant, that is the REMAP grant, the Racial Equity Municipal Action Plan Grant. And we were one of six towns that were awarded this grant. It was very competitive. We had a core initial group that started with us, such as Teresa Tapper, Deanna in HR, Tracy in HR. We had Brian Holmes, just to name a few, I hope I, Fran in purchasing, you know, just to name a few who were part of this core team. And we moved forward, and we knew based on the tool that the REMAP offered us and trained us on, we set goals, and this is a natural progression, what we are presenting here tonight. So starting with the agenda, if someone could turn to the presentation, please. The agenda is we'll go over the purpose, SEOC's mission, background, vision, 2025 actions, actions and action plan. With that said, I would like to introduce you to one of the leaders of the SEOC that is Stoughton Equal is Stoughton Equal Opportunity Committee, and that is Fay Howard.
Thank you, Ms. Roberts. Good evening. The main purpose of the Stoughton Equal Opportunity Committee is to enhance collaboration, understanding, and communication among Stoughton residents, businesses, institutions, and other stakeholders from various cultural, religious, socioeconomic, racial, ethnic, and experiential backgrounds. The SEOC aims to foster a welcoming and inclusive environment throughout the town for all the individuals who live, work, study, or participate in faith communities in Stoughton, as well as those, as those who visit for any purpose. The SEOC's mission is to promote Stoughton as a welcoming community that values diversity, strives to create a community where everyone has an equal vote and a voice in the way that government works, and where all people can thrive where they live, work, and play. Why is this important to the Stoughton community? Stoughton is a diverse, vibrant, and growing community. It's genuinely vital to welcome and promote inclusion throughout the community for everyone because it cultivates a stronger and ultimately more successful society for all. When people feel included and valued, they're more likely to participate in civic life, volunteer, and contribute to the betterment of the community. Different traditions, perspectives, and experiences contribute to a more vibrant and interesting place to live, work, and learn. In essence, the purpose and mission of the SEOC is to foster a welcoming and inclusive environment where members of our community feel valued, respected, and empowered to contribute their unique talents and perspectives, ultimately benefiting everyone who calls Stoughton home. To provide background on the SEOC, it's noteworthy that the REMAP training served as a crucial step in its formation, a point that Ms. Roberts has emphasized in her introduction. In 2022, five people were appointed to the Select Board to serve on the SEOC along with two Select Board liaisons. From 2022 to 2025, SEOC members have served as advisors to the Select Board, leading and supporting efforts such as personnel bylaw changes that were approved at town meeting, expansion of human resource recruitment outreach, diversity training of all municipal department heads in 2023, and other activities including career fairs and collaborating with the Town of Stoughton Procurement Officer and Staff to sponsor a supplier diversity program event, inviting small business owners, minority and women-owned businesses, veteran-owned businesses, and LGBTQ-owned businesses, providing guidance and instruction on how to become certified for state contracts. These are just a few highlights of the work done by the SEOC over the past three years. I'd now like to introduce Betty Sabree, Vice Chair of the Stoughton Equal Opportunity Committee, who will talk about the 2025 vision and the corresponding actions.
Thank you, Ms. Howard.
Excuse me, can I just interrupt for a second? Sorry. I'm going to give them a little extra time because the motion that came in had some technical issues with it, so that's why Ms. Roberts had explained it a little earlier. So, I'm going to give this presentation, you know, a few more minutes. If you can just speed it up a little bit for me. Thank you, appreciate it.
Okay, thank you. So, why should the
It's my discretion. I just want to say, sorry again. It's my discretion, the moderator's discretion to be able to do that. Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. So, why should the SEOC be a bylaw committee, vision 2025, shaping our future? The SEOC has made significant contributions as a standing committee. It's essential to recognize and preserve the impact of its work. By transitioning to a bylaw committee, the SEOC can ensure that its efforts remain a permanent part of Stoughton's municipal structure. A dedicated bylaw committee would provide ongoing engagement with municipal departments, staff, elected officials, and community members to gather valuable input, strengthening collaboration to benefit the Town of Stoughton. Establishing the SEOC as a bylaw committee ensures continued progress, transparency, and community involvement, building on its legacy, and securing its future as an integral part of Stoughton. To expand Stoughton's commitment to equal opportunity, the following actions are needed. Number one, examine how the SEOC integrates within-town governance, including bylaw changes to create a standing committee. Position, position the SEOC as a part of active, position the SEOC as an active partner in municipal government. Expand SEOC membership to include nine representatives from both the schools and the municipality. This broader structure enhances collaboration, ensuring diverse perspectives are considered. In that policy is that reinforce inclusiveness, solidifying the SEOC's commitment. Fully align municipal and school efforts to create a unified approach that supports shared goals and benefits the entire community. Allow the SEOC to exist at the will of town meeting to ensure its continued relevance and adaptability to the town's evolving needs. And finally, enhance engagement in town meetings. I now introduce Shan, Chris Shannon, Chair of the School Committee.
Thank you. Good job. Thank you, Betty. Good evening, everybody. I'll try and make this quick. I just want to let you know that the heart of an effective school committee lies strong communication. It is the foundation on which we build trust, foster collaboration, and create a climate that supports growth for our students, our educators, and our community. That's why the Stoughton Committee is proud to endorse the formation of the Stoughton Equal Opportunity Committee. Feedback is essential for our effectiveness. It not only promotes continuous improvement, but ensures our decisions reflect the voices and needs of those we serve. When we listen, when we respond thoughtfully, we align our goals with the aspirations of our community. We are eager to work together in establishing these educational goals that are not only lawful but aspirational, ensuring that every student has a fair opportunity to succeed and pursue the promise of prosperity that education can unlock. Thank you.
I move to amend Article 46 as shown on the amendment appearing on the virtual table. And thank you. I hope you vote yes in support of this bylaw. It's more about community engagement, expanding the count of the members from five to nine, and give the committee permanence in the town's general bylaws. And thank you very much.
Okay, that was motion to amend. Is there a second? Who's second I needed for the record? What's, what's your name? Okay, you got that? One more time? Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Okay, now on the amendment. Any discussion? Did you want a point of order or point of information? Identify yourself, please.
Scott Carrera, Precinct Two. Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I just want to bring some information out to the members here so they can understand what's going on. This was never voted by the Board of Selectmen. There was a vote of the Board of Selectmen, but it was under a different name. It was under Diversity Equity. And it came, and the board voted, two abstentions, and three people voted to send Deborah forward to bring back information to us, because I asked if we could have a member from the School Committee, the superintendent of schools in front of us, so that we could answer all the questions that needed. I know this is a great feel-good thing, and people aren't going to, you know, think that there's anything wrong with it. The board didn't vote for it. I have never seen this, and we voted it into the warrant, which is a number in the warrant. It was not in the book. All the stuff is right here on the proper votes that were taken by the board. I understand the name was changed because it's not good to have Diversity Equity out there, so we made it something else. But it, it's totally aligned with all the information that we were given. I'm not against these people here. I think they do a great job. That's why I appoint them and reappointed them. I think they do a fantastic job. We don't need to have something slipped in Monday night that I didn't get it forty hours, eight hours ahead of time because it was emailed to certain people, and I don't get emails. I want hard paper so I can read it. So I'm just telling you, vote on something that the board has not backed a hundred percent. If it had come in the way I asked with the superintendent, who could have told me how it affected things, not a new School Committee member who's probably just seen it in a short time, but we weren't even told as a board it was even going before the School Committee. It's not pro-con. It's information, Mr. Terry, to give you what the layout was. It wasn't properly done.
Mr. Carrera, please, no, no cross debate. You do have the floor, but
Thank you. So that's all I want you people to understand is that the board was not brought into this. This is all new to me tonight. All new. All has changed, this amendment, everything. And I got the information. People wanted to see it, how it went, and now it's, it's before us. We don't, I don't think we need a, a town meeting vote to make this a credible committee. I think it's credible enough. It was picked by the board, and that's what it is.
Point of order.
Mr. Cavy?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Is there a point of order or point of information?
Just to address some of those concerns, this was requested by the Stoughton Equal Opportunity Committee, as mentioned in the, the warrant itself, and just as though, you know, imagine if, if an article came before this body that was requested by the Planning Board, they would not require the Select Boards sign off for approval, blessing. Similarly, this is being moved forward by the Stoughton Equal Opportunity Committee, and it doesn't require a vote of the Select Board.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Cavy. Okay, well, why don't we hear any, this is on the amended motion now. Any technical questions on the amended motion? Hearing none, let's go to pro and con debate.
No, excuse me.
Do you have a point of order, sir?
Yes, point of order. Noah Beethar on Precinct Six. I was at the, what was it, November Select Board meeting with my twelve-year-old daughter, and I was there when the, this proposal, in its essence, was brought forward to the Select Board and watched and heard as Deborah Roberts and these other fine people were told that that was not the appropriate venue, that this was the appropriate venue, and that this was the place to bring forward such motions. And now I'm hearing it said that, no, no, it should have been brought to the Select Board first, and I think that's inappropriate. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for your comments.
Just, just to, just to answer that, 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 that statement
I just don't want to go back and forth, Scott.
Hold up. They have to understand, there was a vote by three members on this board to return information to the board for it to be at this thing. Mr. McCrisky said, Deborah, get it together so it could possibly be an article. But when it doesn't go in the book and there's just a number and then it emerges in the book, and then you measure it up against something, it kind of takes you off your feet.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Mr. Sauer, do you have a point of order?
Yes. No, this is a technical question.
Okay, yeah, let's go to the technical questions. Okay, identify yourself, please.
Larry Sauer, Precinct Two. Through you, Mr. Moderator, to the former speaker, could you explain some of the reasoning for the changes to the original article?
Deborah, if you can.
Through you, through you, Mr. Moderator, to the previous speaker. Can I have a, before I respond to his question, can I have a, a point of privilege to have our town council weigh in on that question?
Which she, could you clarify the question?
That, uh, the comment that Mr. Carrera made, that this motion is out of order, please. And then I'd be happy to answer Mr. Sauer's question.
Okay.
Why it was changed.
Okay, I'll ask town council to weigh in.
So, Mr. Carrera, in fact, didn't say it was out of order, and, but for a point of reference, it is in order. This town meeting is well aware that amendments happen frequently at the Town of Stoughton Town Meeting. So, so long as you're compliant with the procedural rule of the forty-eight hours, amendments are properly before this body.
Thank you very much. To Mr., through you, town man, town moderator, to Mr. Sauer, the reason that we had edits was to simplify the language. The sum and substance did not change. It has always been two important points. One, to expand the membership count, which didn't change. We have five. We wanted to expand it to four, to have four appointments from the School Committee. No change there. Second point, to give it some permanency, to have it, give it some more structure, to have it as a part of the town's general bylaw. That did not change. There's no hidden agenda. That's it. Those two main points. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Okay, anybody else with technical questions? Technical questions, please identify yourself.
Jonah Rosenblatt, Precinct Seven.
You're going to have to speak up a little louder, but next time, go ahead.
Okay. I want to know what would
You have to speak into the microphone.
Better?
Better.
Okay. What would qualify the people in this committee to be arbitrators of DEI practices? Because not everyone sees DEI equally. There's a fifty-fifty split. So whose perception of it needed, of it needing to be rectified, or whose perception that a person isn't meeting up to the protocols and standards are you going to adhere to?
I didn't really hear your question very loud.
You didn't? You want me to say it louder?
I, it's hard with
All right, here we go again.
Yeah, it wasn't clear, just
Okay. What would qualify
Is this a question?
Yeah, it's a technical question, yeah. What would qualify the people in this committee to be the arbitrators of whether DEI practices are being met? And, because everyone sees DEI differently. They don't see it equally. So who is going to be the determining, and what makes them qualified to determine whether these DEI practices are, need to be rectified or, or punished, or whatever you want to say? Who is, who is the person that is, what would qualify the people in this committee to be the arbitrators of the DEI practices?
All right, let's see if we get an answer to your question. What would qualify them to be arbitrators?
So, these members are appointed by the School Committee and by the Select Board. They, it's written in the bylaws, the criteria we're looking for and we're hoping for are members or potential members that have a vested interest in the Town of Stoughton, whether you work here, whether you live here, whether you, you have religious affiliation here. And for the professionalism, that's also listed in the bylaw, if you have various backgrounds, and it could change over time. It could be an attorney. It could be a project management. It's not specific to DEI. It's looking at data. It's looking for root cause analysis. It's looking for community engagement.
But that's subjective. It's not objective.
Excuse me, ma'am. No cross debate. Okay, you have a second question?
Yes, I do.
Hold on a second.
You want to do this point of order first or you want me to go next?
Okay. Go ahead, I'll take your point of order while she's looking. The amendment was on the table, Moderator's table. It's too large, too long. It's also on the virtual table.
All right. I just want to say that's very subjective, so that's making my point. And the other question...
Excuse me. Ask a question or you're gonna sit down.
Okay.
Okay?
Yep. The second question is, you're proposing a group to enforce DEI. So what does that enforcement entail and what arbitrary measures will be used to mete out this retribution if there's a, if they go against the protocols?
I have a question of clarification. Where does it say that we're trying to enforce DEI? Can you point to me? Because...
Wait a minute, hold, hold on, Deborah.
That's not answering my question.
If you can't answer a question, I understand.
Oh, okay.
Just try to answer the question so we can move on.
I defer to my fellow members. I, leave the microphone.
There's nothing that's punitive. We're looking to create a welcoming community within Stoughton. I personally have a master's degree in healthcare administration and 40 years as a director of five hospitals, ensuring that everyone received equal care regardless of their gender, regardless if they're over 65 years old or not, regardless of whether they could see, hear. So DEI includes many aspects of life. So we combined have years, over 100 years of experience with people who exhibit differences and we want to embrace inclusiveness in our society.
Okay, thank you. Okay, next, I think, Mr. Feinberg, were you next?
Yeah.
Yeah, please identify yourself.
Arnie Feinberg, Precinct 6. My question's got to do with Section 44-4. Not sure if the lawyer wants to handle it or, Deborah would like to...
Just ask the question. Go ahead.
In it says, SOC may promulgate rules, regulations, or policies to assist in affecting the purposes of this chapter. Failure by the SOC to promulgate such rules and regulations or illegal declaration of their invalid, of their invalidity, excuse the expression, by a court of law shall not act to suspend or invalidate this chapter. It sounds like...
No. Is this a question?
The question is, I, I need, can you give me a clear understanding of what that means to us about the rule of law? I thought we all abide by the laws of the United States and this seems to say that they are going to be above the laws of the United States.
Oh, I defer to Town Council on that because, on that standard language. That's under regulations, correct?
Section 44-4.
44-4, under regulations. I defer to Town Council on that standardized language in our bylaw.
Give her a moment to read it.
I will read it.
I got it.
Oh, you have it, okay.
I just didn't have it before, so I just read it now. What it's essentially saying is that the committee can promulgate or create regulations to round out this bylaw. Because oftentimes there's a bylaw which gives the framework and then the regulations add in detail. But those regulations simply have to comply with law, so that would have to comply with Massachusetts 151B, the Nondiscrimination Act, federal law, nondiscrimination laws there, Title VII, Title IX, all of those things would have to be adhered to in any regulations that they promulgate or create.
It doesn't seem the way I interpret it. I interpret it as, my question is, it appears that if the court rules on that, no matter how the court rules, the bylaw is still valid no matter what the decision. Is that true?
Oh, so if a court rules it invalid, what this says is, if a court comes in and says any particular regulation or provision of this bylaw is invalid, it's struck, right? That's what that's saying.
Okay, thank you. Okay, I believe next up is Carolyn Campbell. Identify yourself, please.
Hi, Carolyn Campbell, Precinct 4. I have a couple of technical questions and a question about order. I guess my question about order is, if we vote on the amendment, are we going to be voting on the amendment and then we be debating this with the motion as amended? Or are we combining this all as to one?
One minute, please.
Because I really don't want to do this twice.
Okay.
Right.
We have to vote the amendment first. Why don't you, we have Town Council to explain that a little bit.
I would suggest, and you're just talking about the debate, whether or not you're debating the amendment or the main motion separately. Am I correct in that understanding?
Yes, and that, yes.
I would suggest, just to make the meeting a little bit more efficient, that we debate the substance of both together because I imagine the committee wants this moved as amended rather than the main motion. And I think a lot of the points of discussion, the technical amendments that were made are, I guess, less important than the main discussion about the substance of the article. So I would suggest it's easier to just debate that altogether.
No, no, that's fine. I was hoping to do so just in simple because I don't think...
Okay, thank you. You have a couple of questions?
I do have a couple of questions. My, my first, I guess my first question is, according to the proposed bylaw, what power to compel does the proposed Equal Opportunity Committee actually have? Or is it more of an advisory and working to provide information to people?
Okay, we get it. Okay, hang on one second, please. See if we get an answer.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Did you want to say the words?
It's an advisory, advisory committee.
Use the microphone, please.
I'm sorry. It's an advisory committee. We have no, no ability to change laws. We serve as an advisory committee to the Select Board and also to the school committee.
So, so the purpose of this committee as it's been amended is to be an advisory committee to both the Select Board, the school committee, and any residents or other people in the town that have questions, issues regarding whatever?
This is your second question.
Yes.
I'm making sure I understood the answer to the first one I asked.
I understood our answer, so let's not repeat. I'll give you one more chance to ask another question.
Yeah, that is really all I had, but thank you.
Thank you very much. Town Council would like to expand upon...
I want to clarify one thing to this gentleman right here who just spoke. I'm not sure his name.
Mr. Feinberg.
Feinberg. So what, to be more clear, as I reread this here, is if the committee promulgates a regulation, creates a regulation, and the court subsequently says that the regulation, whatever provision it is, is invalid, it doesn't affect this bylaw, which was separately enacted by this body, right? This bylaw goes through review of the Attorney General after, if you, if you were to pass it, it goes through review of the Attorney General and they make a determination of whether or not it's appropriate. But the regulations themselves cannot invalidate this bylaw, which is stronger, I guess, than a regulation would be. Stronger isn't the right word, but it has more force of law.
Excuse me, you're out of order. Okay, thank you. No, no, you already had your two questions. No, he asked two. Yeah, see? I'm paying attention, so please sit down because we're in the technical question period. Uh, no, we're not doing that. Okay? All right, I believe Lisa Lyons, you're next. Please state your name and questions, no statements.
Okay. Lisa Lyons, Precinct 2. Are you concerned with Stoughton, should this bylaw go through? Are you not concerned that there is a real risk to Stoughton not being able to get federal funding, given that the provisions of this bylaw has been struck down at the federal level for all intensive purposes as of this moment?
You want to answer that?
Could anybody answer that?
I'm not concerned.
No.
Okay, that's the answer. You have one more question?
I do. So with regard to your welcomeness and inclusivity areas of this bylaw, are you not concerned with the actual, these are words, and there's a difference between the words and the behaviors that has been reflected here in the Town of Stoughton that actually lacks diversity of thought? Are you not concerned about that and how unwelcoming and actually exclusive it has
Through you, Mr. Moderator, to the speaker, I'm not concerned. I believe that no one, no community is perfect. We all strive to do better and I know I personally do each and every day. One of the things we learned going through REMAP training and the tool was to look at data, to look at root cause analysis and move forward. It's not a gotcha moment. What it is, is, and I, I wrote it down, not everything that is faced can be changed, but nothing can be changed until it is faced. And that is the core of my belief. And now I will turn it around, turn it over to some of the other members. Do you have something additional to say?
Uh, excuse me, you answered the question.
Okay.
Thank you very much, Ms. Ramis.
Thank you.
All right, thank you both. All right, next up is Marina Ryas. Did I get that? Please state your name and precinct number, please.
Marina Ryas, Precinct 7. My first question is, why are we having this committee? We know by now that across the country, DEI has been eliminated or being...
Excuse me, excuse me. Marina, Marina. Question, you just asked a question, why are we having this, okay? Is that your question?
Um, okay.
You're starting to make a political statement after that, so I just want a question. What is your question?
Right now, it shows zero, but going forward, are you planning to add excessive numbers, funding to your committee, just like Climate Committee?
She's asking if there's going to be funding to the committee?
Yeah, going forward.
Going forward.
This article has estimated cost of zero.
Okay, thank you. Second question, have you got one?
Not at the moment.
Thank you.
You're all set? Okay, thank you. Okay, I believe, is it Ben? Could you state your name and precinct number?
Benjamin Corre, Precinct 1. I'll keep my question simple. In the Town of Stoughton, as a matter of public policy, are there any concrete examples of, of policies that don't promote or include equity and inclusion?
I don't know if we got, let me see if I can get an answer for that.
I'm not well-versed on, through you, Mr. Moderator, to the speaker, I'm not well-versed on all of the policies within the town. I can say that we, the SOC, were closely with the Human Resources Department and we found some areas that could be improved. And with their guidance, that is of our Town Manager, Mr. Calder, with Deanna and Tracy in HR, we did present, we did make some edits and it came to town meeting and you voted to approve it. So that is the personnel bylaw that you, the town meeting, passed. I can state that as a fact.
Okay, thank you. You're all set, sir? Okay, thank you. The lady up there, I don't know if who was first, you or Mr. Anzavino?
I think she was up first.
Okay, could you state your name and precinct number, please?
Anita Wood, Precinct 8. I have a question. It, the estimated cost is zero, but in Action Plan Number 5, says in collaboration with the Superintendent, Town Manager, to create an annual program plan and budget for the SOC. What would be the budget?
If someone could answer that, you're talking about what's the budget?
In the Action Plan Number 5, it says, in collaboration with the Superintendent and Town Manager, create an annual plan, a program plan and budget for the SOC.
Okay, can we get an answer to that?
The budget would come through the Town Manager, but the point would be to align existing policies, programs, and initiatives to ensure that they are fair and inclusive, at least on the school side, to all students. So for example, if we needed to amend our SMAC recordings so that they were accessible to our Haitian Creole speaking families and Portuguese speaking families, then we would work with the SOC through the school committee to the Superintendent to manage that.
Okay, thank you. Do you have another question?
Where would the budget be funded from?
Do we have an answer for that?
The Town Manager's budget.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Anzavino, identify yourself, please.
Thank you. John Anzavino, Precinct 4. Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Through you, obviously we have equal employment opportunity, you know, statutes, federal, state. What I, what I'd really like to hear from is the people who this might really affect, which would be the people who do the hiring in the town through the Town Manager or HR or the Superintendent of Schools. I would just like their opinion on this article and whether they think it's going to be a hindrance to their operation or if they, if they're supportive of this. I think that would be very helpful, at least for me. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Anzavino. Mr. Town Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I'm absolutely delighted to answer that question. I don't know if anybody's noticed, but the world changes daily. What was normal yesterday is, is offensive today. What was legal yesterday is illegal today. And many of these changes are for the best because many people among us in our diversified country, whether they're disabled, whether they're of a different sexual orientation, a different religion, a different ideology, a view very different. In order to respond to those challenges, we need rule changes, we need policy changes, we need education. In every one of our external-facing offices in this town, including police and fire, we have to have the capacity to speak several languages. That's changed dramatically. All this is about, and I support it with every ounce of my being, is giving us the tools we need to make those adjustments that society is challenging us with in a fair, equitable, kind, inclusive way. I'm offended as a citizen of this country that we get scared away by three letters, D-E-I-O. That's petrifying. But I know the people of Stoughton embrace the concept. Let's be kind, let's be fair, let's be honest, let's treat people with dignity, let's give people the equal opportunity. That's all this is about. And the question about where's the funding going to come, we've got $30,000 for the third year in a row in the Town Manager's budget to fund opportunities, like the Fred Richards opportunity that many of you attended, like Martin Luther King Day, like the Portuguese festivals that are not just for Portuguese people, they're for all of us. You got to ask yourself what you want Stoughton to be. And if you want it to be great as it is in so many ways, then please try to understand this isn't about D-E-I, that scary acronym that Washington... this isn't about D E I, that scary acronym that Washington has made a slur. We're all better than that. That's how I feel about it.
Thank you, Mr. Coulter. Is there someone at the back microphone there that wants to talk, has a question?
Nope, just waiting for the pro con debate.
Okay, thank you.
I have a technical question.
Mr. Guerin was here for us, then we'll go to you, Karen.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Jim Guerin, precinct six. If the appropriate changes have been made to all the H R departments, why is this bylaw necessary?
Can anybody ask, answer the question, Mr. Coulter?
Thank you, Jim, and thank you, Ms. Moderator. Adjusting to the changes of our society is not an event, it's an ongoing process. We're never done. If you look at how we hired people five years ago, you wouldn't recognize it today. It's a different world that's changing all the time. Some people say our democracy will be over by the end of summer. That's how fast things are moving. Our H R department, up until this year, had two people in staff working 50 hours a week without taking a vacation in 35 years, trying to keep up with the duties of H R. Trying to keep up with the challenges of society is a new challenge that we have to stay on every single day and make changes, which I think you may all agree, changes in Stoughton don't come easily. And that's why we need to stay on it. It's an ongoing process, it's not an event where we can say we're done. Thanks, Jim.
Can I comment to that?
All right, just a question. Do you have a second question? You can come back for comments. All right, anybody else with technical questions? I don't see anybody. Oh, I'm sorry, Karen, let's go back to you. Identify yourself, please.
Karen Clip, precinct eight. Previous employed as an E E O specialist, federal government and state. My question is, will this committee be involved in the reviewing of all the hiring processes or candidates within this, in the town and use the proper tools to evaluate whether we're doing an equal opportunity hiring?
Through you, Mr. Moderator, I think, Karen, I understand your question. What this is about touches every corner of the town. How we do policing, I think Chief McNamara could speak to that. How we do EMS with our diverse minority-majority community, I think Chief Carroll could speak to that. How we deal with people at the window and assessing in the clerk's office. How we treat employees or potential employees who are applying for jobs but have broken It affects every part of our business. I get at least a letter a week or a phone call a week in Portuguese, and I have an assistant who's fluent in Portuguese. I chose her purposely because of her capacity to speak Portuguese. Our citizens are populated, excuse me, our town is populated by the Portuguese community. We have an obligation to serve them. So it affects every element of every department within your town. It affects every element of every department in every town. Stoughton just has, has to be, happens to be unique, given our demographic and our diversity. We've got an obligation to be able to serve those who are charged with serving. That takes ongoing training, and again, it's not an event, it's an ongoing process. Employee training, language training, sitting down with people, and I'll wrap it up, Bob, sitting down with people who are coming before the planning board, and they may be poor people who want something done with their land. They can't afford to hire an attorney. If we can't sit down with the members of our community and give them through Mark's office, the professional guidance and technical expertise, then we're not paying attention to the people that live in Stoughton. So I hope that answered it.
No, you're off, you're off target there, Mr. Coulter.
I didn't understand it clearly.
You're off.
Excuse me, no cross debate? Do you have a second question?
The question I have, and it's the same first question, will this committee be involved in reviewing each candidate hiring practice? Because in E E O, you can, you're responsible to make sure that.
You have to ask the question, Karen, excuse me, I think you asked a question. Is it gonna be involved in?
Are they gonna be involved in the hiring practices?
Not, not at all. They would be involved with providing us with guidance where we're missing the mark.
Thank you. Thank you both. Okay, Dr. Byetta? I know we all know you, but if you could identify yourself for the TV audience?
Good evening, Joe Byetta, superintendent of schools and resident, excuse me, of the community. Since Mr. Anzavino asked about the superintendent's thoughts on this, I'm just gonna provide you with some statistics on behalf of the children of this town. Fifty-six percent of the students who attend Stone Public Schools are minority students. Stop. Think about that. I'm a graduate of this district. I can assure you, in the class of 88, it wasn't even 10%. We are a changing community. Our fastest hiring is in our bilingual community. Our fastest growth is in our Haitian community. They are choosing to legally live in this community. Our hiring practices have to look at making sure that, in the case of education, that we do have teacher mentors. Always the best candidate should get the job, but the fact of the matter is that our kids need to see professionals in front of them who are working with them. I'm a product of that. I was a bilingual kid. I learned English as a second language. I was able to take in, from three people that I can name one, one of them is in this audience as a town meeting member, who taught me English along with the Portuguese teacher who helped me with that. So the acceptance of this, to Tom's comment, you know, what drives me nuts about this debate is we're so afraid of the word inclusion. And yet, every day, 20% of my kids are included in classes because they learn differently and have learning challenges. And so to come together as a community and simply look at, are we moving this in the right direction or not? No power of authority to hire or fire, no power of authority to anything except to say, how's it going? What do we need? Where are we going? When I was a kid, and I'll leave you with this, 33% of the population in this town was Portuguese, not a single one of them was sitting in this audience, for the record. They are today. Added to that, my neighbors were Lithuanians. For those of you that have been around for a long time, you'll remember that Stoughton was heavily Lithuanian, right? And if you remember, we were also very Jewish. And so the community is changing in color, in religion, in orientation, in how they choose to live their lives. And our kids, 56%, if you ever thought that 56.8% of the given school would be minority students, you'd be saying to yourself, what do you mean? So when we walk our town, we are still very white. We still are. It's a fact. It's okay. But when you walk into the buildings of Stoughton Public Schools, we're incredibly diverse, and I think this committee is simply saying, how do we make sure that we are addressing issues as they come up? And if they come up, we're not gonna, listen, I don't want to create any more rules that I already have to deal with, and I'm sure Tom does it, but we want to make sure that we're effective. Thank you for the time.
Thank you, Dr. Byetta. All right, any more, I don't know if everybody else is lining up for pro and con? Any technical questions?
I have a question.
Okay, identify yourself, please.
David Lurie, precinct six. Two test, just procedural questions. How many votes are needed, how many tonight to pass this through?
What's the quantum of votes?
What's the quantum of votes? And secondly, where does it go from here? Does it have to go to a townwide vote, or is it done right at this body here?
Let me ask the town council. Yeah, it's okay. You got distracted? Okay. Is this a simple majority? Yes. This is for the amendment, but also it's for the whole time, for the whole question. Right, so we're gonna vote on the amendment, which will cover everything, which includes the bylaw.
Yeah, so you vote on the amendment?
Yeah. Yeah, that's okay.
Yes, so you first vote on the amendment, so the changes that Deborah highlighted in the beginning, then if that were to pass by 50%, you vote on the main motion as amended, so the entire thing with those amendments included also 50% majority required.
And his other question was, where does it go from here? Is it, just becomes part of the committee, the whole bylaw just gets established?
Yeah, the bylaw is approved and the committee is.
Well, it has to go to the Attorney General's office.
Yeah, yeah. Oh, yes, of course, yes.
So how about the council?
Yeah, of course. So all bylaws, general and zoning, with the exception of personnel bylaws, go to the Attorney General for review, for compliance with Massachusetts general law. Once that happens, then it just becomes part of your bylaw, like any other bylaw.
Matt Phillips?
Yes.
Identify yourself.
Matt Phillips, precinct two. So a couple times it was stated that this will affect every aspect of our town, so I just wanted to get some clarification. Does it also stem down to private businesses in the way that they run themselves?
Can anybody answer that? Does this go, does this also affect private businesses? Do we know that?
We have no jurisdiction over private businesses, sir.
Okay, thank you.
The town manager.
Okay. Okay, I think that's it for technical questions, right? All right, moving on. Pro and con debate? We're gonna try to use the microphones if they work like this. Con on this side, pro on that side, we'll see how it goes during the whole process. Okay, who's up first?
I think I was here first. I was standing there, but I was waiting for.
Respectfully, I've been standing here for 40 minutes. I actually timed it.
She was first.
I defer.
Could you identify yourself, please?
Sure, it's Lindsay Weber, precinct five. I actually have notes, so I can stay on task. I can't begin to comprehend, although I'm not surprised, that in 2025, the basic right of equality is still being argued. I fully support approving Article 46. Most of us here tonight have benefited from DEI, whether as parents who have taken parental leave, individuals with disabilities, or parents of children with disabilities, and veterans who have been the recipients of veteran services and preferential consideration in hiring. I would like to point out that data shows that white women are the largest group of people who benefit from DEI initiatives and programs. It's true that this type of committee didn't exist five, 10, or 15 years ago. If we know better, it's our obligation to do better. This committee promotes fairness as well as kindness and shows that Stoughton is a welcoming community. Opposing this shows a lack of understanding or a willingness to see beyond your own experience. Equality is a fundamental right, not a negotiable idea, and I highly suggest everyone votes in favor of this tonight.
All right, thank you. Can I ask people not to clap? I understand everybody's choice about different comments, but it takes more time out. All right, so we're gonna go back and forth. That was pro, con. Mr. Kirby?
Robert Kirby, precinct six. I think I probably share the sentiment with many people that don't object to the nature of ensuring that everyone has a voice, that there's equity, inclusion, and Stoughton being a welcoming community. No one here would rightly debate any of those values. I think the concern for myself and probably many others is this particular article is seeking to enshrine this committee as part of our town government in perpetuity. And in that way, it creates a filter by which every other committee and institution, sub-institution of the town is now deemed referential to in the respect of, it can impact their decisions for better or for worse by virtue of the ideological filter that those members have, and they might be 180 degrees, 180 degrees away from the persons in their respective departments based on some ideological point, but not necessarily seeking the best interest of that department's interests. So it can create a divisive and point of interference in a lot of things. Not that anybody is trying to perpetrate racist goals or anything like that, but just in the smooth running of government, it now creates a structure for kind of a political activism that could impede the flow of town government in some manner or speaking. And because it's enshrined in perpetuity, there's very little recourse that anybody would have to try to circumvent that. So it is something that could, I think, hurt the town government. Have an advisory group, you don't have to enshrine it in the structure of the town government to make it have an impactful place, but this, this is definitely taking it a step further, it's making it a part of government, and whether they have no quote-unquote authority to make the decisions, they have a political place and a filter by which to influence things ideologically, not just in the objective best interests of the town governance. So that's, so I'm against it for that reason. Not against the good things that they're trying to accomplish, but the way they're about putting themselves into town government in perpetuity. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for your comments. Moving on. I believe next up is Mr. Sauer.
Larry Sauer, precinct two. I proudly support this article, and I support enshrining this committee in perpetuity in our government. I think it's critically important that diversity, equity, and inclusion continue to be a part of what we consider in our laws, in our hiring, in all aspects. As the superintendent said, this town is changing, becoming more diverse, and I would ask that the people, especially those who support diversity, equity, and inclusion, use those words. Don't let them use the DEI, the scare tactic, as our town manager mentioned, that doesn't have meaning. Make them say they're against diversity, they're against inclusion, they're against equity, because the opposite of those words, diversity, is uniformity. Is that what, do we all want to be the same? The opposite of inclusion is exclusion. Do we want to be excluding people? The opposite of equity is inequity. Is that what we're asking by voting against this? I just want to say I'm glad that the answer to Ms. Lyons' question was that, no, people weren't worried about the federal government, because I'm glad that Stoughton is not complying in advance, okay? Voting for this article is a vote against racism, against nationalism, against misogyny, against homophobia, and against hate. Please vote with me for this article. Thank you.
All right, thank you for your comments. Please, I might ask you to keep your applause to the very end, all right? All right, I believe, Pat Colburn, you're up next.
I'm actually pro, but I was standing in this line long before you split it up, so do I have to move or should I just sit down?
No, it's okay, you can, you have a pro comment?
I'm just gonna be very brief. The more I hear people speak against inclusion, the more I believe down in my soul that we need it. Inviting everyone to the table isn't taking away from anybody else. This is an advisory committee that will make recommendations to the school committee and the select board who will vote on them. This is not a committee that's gonna take out our town overnight. I'm not afraid, and I don't think anybody else needs to be, so I'll be voting for this. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. No applause, please. All right, now I heard two pro, I'm gonna hear two con, okay? I think Lisa Lyons, identify yourself, what precinct?
Hi, Lisa Lyons, precinct two. So I've heard the words diversity, welcoming, inclusion. I agree with all those words, and they are words, but what I have experienced, to the presenters' points about experience, is the very exact opposite of those words. I have felt unwelcome, as evidenced here tonight, the mockery by our town manager by saying, ooh, for people who don't agree to this. It is unconscionable, okay, because I have a different ideology than most of these town meeting reps who have been clapping, as evidenced by last February's town meeting, when certain petitioned articles that voting residents signed.
You have to stay remain to this article.
To be heard, this is a petitioned article, so I'm speaking to a petitioned. This is a petitioned article, so I'm speaking to a petitioned article that...
This is not a petitioned article.
Okay.
So you have to talk Article 46.
It speaks to censoring people and feeling unwelcome, and that is the very opposite of the words that are nice and that I agree with here. But the actual history of Stoughton implementing these words have been contrary to these words. And I strenuously object to this for those very reasons. Now, if behavior in Stoughton was actually welcoming to diversity of thought, I would be open arms. But that is clearly evident, that is not the case in Stoughton. And for that reason, I am voting against this. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you for your comments. Let's move on. Mr. Ventresco, another con.
Peter Ventresco, Precinct 8. Okay. When the petitioner first started here, I got the impression she was saying that we weren't a welcoming community. Well, I disagree. We are a welcoming community. Because just look at the community around us. We have more minority churches in Stoughton than most towns around us. And look at the schools. You have a lot of minorities. And Walmart is probably the biggest employer of minorities in the world. Maybe 85% of their employees are minorities. And last year, they got away from DEI because it wasn't working, and 85% of the minorities wanted to do away with it. So this whole thing is 70 years too late. Plus, the DEI means you're hiring people, you should be hiring people on their merits, not because of their color, race, or religion. It's on their merits. You pick the best qualified person. And I guess that's all I want to say. So I'm against this article.
Okay. Thank you for your comments. I believe a woman back there, could you identify yourself, please?
Hi, my name is Teddy Hanson-Dore. I'm from Precinct 3. I'm a new town representative this year. I am speaking in support of Article 46. Part of the reason my family moved to Stoughton in 2018 was the diversity of identities and languages and everything that Ms. Roberts referenced. Stoughton is a town that contains these things in a way that my and my husband's hometowns simply did not. And it's been a real wonderful pleasure getting to experience them. The school's diversity that the superintendent mentioned is a major reason why my kid really enjoys going to school with a lot of different people. She's made that very clear to me. So this is why we've chosen Stoughton as the place to raise our children. I loved getting to attend so many kinds of new events, eat so many different kinds of food. Many of the people in this room, of all political affiliations, made me and my family feel welcome. I want Stoughton to remain this interesting community and become a place where an increasing diversity of people feel welcome. We, as a town, have a chance not just to support that goal via a permanent committee, but to allow more people to get involved in government via an expanded committee. I got involved in local government this year. I think more people should. This seems like a great place. We need as many different skills and strengths as we can get. Regardless of political affiliation, we should all seek to create a place where everyone is equally supported to vote, govern, and thrive. This committee will do that work. They have already proved they can do this work. An expanded committee can do more. A permanent, enshrined committee can do more. That can only be a positive, and I encourage the body to vote to pass Article 46. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you for your comments.
I need to hear one more from the con side, and then it'll be even.
I heard four from the pro, and then we'll leave it up to the body to the wisdom of the town meeting reps if they want to stop debate. Well, I think that's... All right. You have to use the microphone. We're not going to start. I know I... Ellie, can you...
Should I?
I'm going to ask town council one more time.
In the beginning, that question was asked. I think you're asking about the debate. Are we debating the changes, or are we debating the whole article? And in the beginning, I suggested to the meeting that would be better, more prudent use of time, to debate the entire thing, because the technical changes that were made really aren't what's being discussed here. It's more of the substance. So then you can take the votes, one, two, hopefully, quickly.
Right. Everybody understand that? So this is on the... Excuse me?
His question was simply, what are we talking about here? Are we talking about the amendment, or are we talking about the main motion? And I said both.
Excuse me?
Okay. I think that everybody should be clear on that. If not, come on down, we'll tell you.
Mr. Moderator, point of order. I think we still officially have...
Identify yourself, please.
Juan Fox, Precinct 1. I think we still officially have to vote on the modification.
Well, wait. Yeah.
Be that first before we even consider voting.
Hold it. Out of order right now. Okay, I'm going to ask the town council one more time to explain how we're doing this.
Okay. So the debate on both, the amendment and the main motion, were taken together. Then there will be two separate votes. First, on the motion to amend, which are the changes that Deborah had pointed to in the beginning of her presentation. Then the second motion that will be voted right after, one right on top of the other, will be the motion. If the motion to amend passes, it's the main motion as amended, so with all those amendments included. If the motion to amend fails, it's a vote just on the main motion without those amendments. But we're going to do them, one, and then two, right after each other, because we debated this thing. Of course, moderator's discretion.
That's, there you go. You're correct.
Excuse me?
I agree with the councilor's statement right there.
I have a point of order or question.
Identify yourself, please.
Carolyn Campbell, Precinct 4. Would it, would this be more feasible to make this like a substitute motion, or like a motion so that we can just, or the maker of the motion just substitutes this motion, and we just need to vote on one motion? Or if it's going to be confusing and we have to do two votes? At this point, I would just say what you did, but if there's a way to make it just one vote?
It's still two votes, even with a substitute. Because you vote whether or not to substitute, and then on the substitute...
Okay, thank you. That's all I wanted to know.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. Everybody clear on that? Okay, I'm going to hear one more con. Mr. Feinberg, I thought you were next, Mr. Feinberg.
He gave it up for me.
There's no trade-off like that. Do you want to be up?
I asked him if I...
Excuse me. I'm the moderator. I'll make the discretionary ruling here. Mr. Feinberg, you're in line. If you want to give up your spot, please sit down. Either you stay in line. There's no playing games here. No, we're moving the question. There was one more. I'm just trying to play some fairness here.
Okay, but you said if he sits down...
I'm asking, Mr. Feinberg, do you want to speak? Yes or no? I need an answer right now, sir. Okay, sit down, please, Mr. Feinberg. Okay, you're up. Identify yourself, please.
Yes. Jana Rosenblatt?
You have to, I'm sorry, you have to speak into the microphone?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Jana Rosenblatt, Precinct 7. Okay. DEI is a dangerous and detrimental policy that I've personally experienced the ramifications of in this town, and it should never be implemented. It's such a bad policy that 77 million people realized that this and voted for President Trump to do away with it. It's being expediently eliminated in many businesses nationwide because it just doesn't work. DEI has been proven to, to... Has been proven to divide our country even further than it already has been. DEI is a facet of communism which also never works. DEI proponents are not being honest with the people because it is just a way to now oppress a new group of people in exchange for the present group being oppressed. Proponents falsely claim that those who oppose it are racist. But that's an outright lie, because DEI people who are racist are pretending that the shifting of the target of racism is not really racism, but covert racism is still racism. But if you say a lie often enough, it will be believed. The DEI proponents are gaslighting you by shifting the target, and this only perpetuates the racism. The only benevolent and correct thing to do is to endorse a belief that all people should be treated the same, and no one group should be put ahead of any other, or it's still racism. What DEI promotes is a vulgar retribution for the oppression of racism, and that never should be allowed in our town or even in our society. It's a false premise that makes the DEI backer no better than the racist who initially started the racism. We need to eliminate it, not implement it. Meritocracy is the way to go.
Okay. You all set?
Mm-hmm.
Thank you very much for your comments. Okay. Please hold your applause, everybody. Thank you all. All right. The question was called, move the question. Okay, we're going to, as the town councilor said, we're going to vote first on the amendment. Are we ready to vote? Everybody ready?
[inaudible]
Oh, I'm sorry. You're right. I'm sorry. I'm trying to get a little ahead of myself. We have to move, vote on moving the question. Two-thirds, is that up on the screen? Okay, give us a minute to set it up. I was just... You want to do voice vote? We can try voice vote. I can't hear you. Okay, this is a two-thirds vote required to move the question. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye!
All those opposed?
No.
Okay, I think the ayes have it there clearly. All right, see, I was right there. Just go ahead, you know? All right, so now we're going to move up on the screen when we're ready to vote on the amendment. Still a simple majority on the amendment. We're ready? Okay, vote now on the amendment. Okay, the motion passes. 91, yes. 42, no. One abstention. Just give me a moment to write it down. 91, 42, and one. Okay, now, we're going to proceed to the motion as amended. Did I get that right? Okay, this is going to be the motion as amended. We're going to vote on that now, since we already had the debate, the technical questions. Excuse me? No. Simple majority for this.
It's not a zoning bylaw, so it's a general bylaw majority.
It's, she said it's not a zoning bylaw. It's a... Could you just use the microphone? He's asking if...
A general bylaw is a majority. A zoning bylaw is two-thirds.
Okay, so this is a simple majority. Are we ready? Okay, we're ready to vote. This is on the... We are voting on the motion as amended. The motion as amended, okay? Are we good? Let's vote. One, two, or three. Simple majority. All right, the motion passes. 87, yes. 46, no. Zero abstention. 87 to 46 to zero.
You want to say a few words?
All right. Thank you all.
Thank you very much.
Point of order?
Who's asking that?
Larry Sauer, Precinct 2.
Yes, go ahead.
I have a question about, seems to be that there's a change in practice, and I just wanted to clarify that. On Monday night, we had a situation where a person essentially jumped the line, called to move the question, and the question was moved with very little debate. Today, a person in the audience shouted out, moved the question while people were waiting in line. Is that now the practice, that we can just shout out when we want to move the question? Or are we going to follow the line as we have in the past? Just want to understand.
As I mentioned before, I think early on last Monday, with these pro-con microphones, people from the audience, if you stand up and I can recognize you, I'll recognize you to move the question.
Okay, so we are changing the practice.
Well, yeah. I mean, we change the practice with the pro-con microphones, too.
Okay.
All right. Let me just say, before we go... Mr. Gino?
Yeah.
Identify yourself, please.
A point of information.
Sure.
On the basis of the last speaker's question, I would suggest that you consider that the people who are in line to speak should be the people who can move the question. The problem with having a pro-con microphones is that anyone in the audience can say, oh, I don't want that other person to speak, and I'm going to just stand up and move the question. There should be some order to this process, it seems to me, but that's just my opinion. I've seen it happen over many years. So I'm just, I'm just suggesting to you...
Thank you for your comments. Okay, let me consult with council for a second, okay? Well, here's my ruling, Mr. Gino. Moderator is going to make discretion, and I will, if I hear four and four, I will ask the audience if they heard enough. Someone can obviously make a motion to move the question. We'll do it that way. Is that fair enough? I can't hear you without the microphone.
You can cut, cut off debate.
That's correct.
Yes.
That's what I'll do.
That's a great idea. Thank you.
I'd even fear it. Okay, everybody clear with that?
Can I make a point of order?
Is it going to be a quick one, Peter?
Very quick.
Okay. Identify yourself first.
Peter Ventresco, Precinct 8. As far as moving the question goes, I think everybody that's in line to speak...
No, not...
No way. Let me hear you. If somebody says move the question, stop anybody else that came up. But anybody in that line that's been waiting there five, 10 minutes, they should be able to speak. That's all I want to say.
Okay, thank you for your comments. Appreciate it. But the moderator is going to use his discretion, because otherwise, we can go on all night. The idea of the pro-con microphones is to speed up the process. If you want to be here for weeks, I'm okay with that. If you want to have, try to have a little efficiency, leave it up to the moderator. I usually make good decisions. If I'm wrong, people push back a little bit. We can debate it, discuss it. Moderator will adjust his decision. But in the sense of having efficiency in this town meeting, we're going to make some changes. I ask you to kind of support me in this. Let's go forward. Thank you. All right. Now, before we go back to the budget discussing department holds, let me just say this. I have to turn the page here. We're going to go back to the budget article, Article 14, General Fund Operating Budget. That starts on page 34, but the actual departments begin on page 80. And we have Finance Director Elizabeth Zalewski. And then when we're done with the departments, I'll have Superintendent Bayard to make his presentation on the school department. All right? Carmel? I'm going to recuse myself from this... Oh, actually, we'll go through the holds, and then I'll make my statement. Okay, what page are we on?
142. 140.
140. 140.
We're starting out with the Historical Commission, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you. 1, 1, 4, 0.
1, 4, 0, in your town meeting vote.
Just give everybody a moment to get there. 140, page 140. Everybody there? Okay, Biz, why don't we start?
Okay, Mr. Moderator. On Monday night, it was voted that we continue by just reading off the bottom-line budget for the remaining budgets. So Historical Commission, budget $800. Next page, Recreation. Next page, Recreation. Bottom-line budget is 45867353, and that's on page 142. Page 143 starts Parks, Department 650. Bottom-line budget for Parks, 47557300. Community Events, which is on page 145. Bottom-line budget for Community Events is 104090. Total Culture and Recreation budget as presented, 230493553. Page number 146, Retirement of Debt, Department 710. Uh, retirement of debt, because somebody had a question earlier in the day to me, retirement of debt is when we are paying our debt, and this includes principal interest and short-term interest. Eight million, 41399849. That's also inclusive of inside and outside the debt limit. Uh, next is page 147, Department 820. State and County Assessments. This is the chargebacks that we get from the, um, state for cherry-sheep revenue. Total Assessments, 5380673. Page number 148, and this one has, um, two on this page. The first one is Department 909, Health Insurance. Health Insurance budget is 1388863902. Department 910, Townwide Insurance, 2 million, 33664160. Retirement Contribution, that is 8 million, sorry, 8 million, 684791. Unemployment Compensation, $50,000. Total Benefits and Insurances, 24 million, 95977162. And lastly, in the General Operating Budget, is Department 914, Transfer to Other Funds. We have, um, put in to transfer to our OPEB Trust Fund, a total of $100,000. Total Budget as presented tonight, 141 million, 96660.00.
That's it, for General Fund.
Okay, we all set?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Biz.
You're welcome.
Okay, before we start to the, go back to the hold, all the hold list, I'm gonna ask Dr. Biaida if you'd like to make your presentation. Feel free to come up to the podium, and we'll put it on the screen.
Good evening again. I hope the Celtics are winning. I have a quick PowerPoint, and I'm not a reader of PowerPoints, so if I go through it, it's also available, uh, on our district website, but I wanted to just bring all of us, um, together, um, as it pertains to the schools. Our FY '26 budget process are, I'm thankful to, um, out, two outgoing members of the School Committee, Ms. Weiss and Ms. Kreckler, as well as now the Chair, Ms. Shannon, Mr. Barboza, the Vice Chair, Mr. Stefano, Ms. Powers, and Dr. Sears. On behalf of all of the working team and our teachers and students, um, I want to, first of all, um, welcome the Superintendent-elect. If you haven't heard, um, I will be retiring in FY, um, June of 2026, so I have one more year with you. Um, but the Superintendent-elect has been appointed by the School Committee, and she's here tonight. It's the Principal of Stoughton High School, Mrs. Juliette Miller. Your willingness and our collective willingness, um, must continue to be the future of our students and our schools. As you know, the federal government is going through a lot of significant change right now, and I can tell you as of tonight that there will be significant impacts on federal, federal grants. Titles II, III, and IV are, are basically zeroed out. IDEA, which is the Special Education, looks like it's gonna be funded at FY '24 numbers, not FY '25 numbers. And Title I looks like it's gonna be funded at FY '24 numbers, uh, not, uh, our typical projections. Those will also be coming, more than likely, the way things are headed, and again, as of right now, they're headed to be block grants. Block grants are a way for money to go to the state, and then the state decides how it's going to dispense that. In general, because of the significant change that we've had in, uh, in our student population, we will not see huge negatives. Um, I wanna thank the, um, Town Manager, the Finance Committee, the Select Board, our School Committee, um, and you, the body, uh, for our continued work to try to make Stoughton Public Schools a better place. So I'll start with just the positives of what I believe some of you in this audience know already, and that is that this past year, U.S. News &amp; World reported, included Stoughton High School, The South, and The Wilkins as a list of their best schools. Stoughton High School for their first time, The South and The Wilkins for the second time. Stoughton High School was named a School of Recognition by DESI for accountability results and reducing chronic absenteeism. Stoughton High School, for the first time, earned a Bronze Distinction on the Advanced, the College Board Advanced Placement Program as a School of Honor, or what they call the Honor Roll. Our DA Principal, Mr. Rob Cancilleri, just a few weeks ago, was named the 2025 Massachusetts School Administration Association Elementary School Principal of the Year. He is our second one in the last few years. Uh, Mr. Matt Collantonio, who's now in central office, was at the middle school, uh, received it, I believe, in, in 2018. Our state championships continue, especially in the two programs that are continuous. Uh, one, our music program, and second, our marching band, of course, and the full co, uh, community of our, our music program, uh, in our K-12, pre-K-12. And then more distinction, um, this year, um, for a growing, fast-growing Stoughton High School Theater program, as they will recognize as the NAMON Prize regionally, and, um, it's, it's really just incredible to see these kids and the amount of hours and time that they're putting after school in order to, uh, to be part of a community that's supporting them, and as you know, earlier tonight, there was an announcement about an upcoming show. Going quickly, there are several growing pressures affecting our budget, and they continue. This is year two of that, more so than in prior years. Increased student enrollment, a rise in our high-needs population, I'll get to that in another slide, which requires mandated positions to be filled. Mandated positions are filled one of two ways. They either added to the budget, or you take from another part of the budget to add to the budget, and that usually means taking from General Education to pay for mandated areas. Not a good way to do business. And of course, that means we have to meet the local requirements, uh, for those students, um, within the classroom. We are not requesting new positions in this budget, except for mandated, uh, positions in Special Education. Um, so just to be very clear, uh, there's no new positions, um, in General Education across the board, although there is a significant need since this budget was completed. Specifically, um, our transportation, um, um, bid went out. That bid is higher by $34,000 than we projected, so we have to find that money within the budget. Out-of-district tuitions will average somewhere between 5 and 7.5%, and some of our private schools are up over $50,000 for one student. Our staff salaries are maintained across our collective bargaining agreements. Um, as of last, uh, as of, uh, Tuesday, we finalized a, uh, ten-year-to-three-year contract for our Administrator of Assistance, which means all of our CBAs, uh, pending them passed in the School Committee, and, um, the union will be finalized, uh, for this coming year. Um, and then lastly, the one that we can't control at all, which is inflation, and we continue to see that, as all of us see it. Anytime we go to the grocery store, we buy gas or anything else, and that has a direct impact. The concern I have around inflation, that I don't speak a lot about, is, uh, what is the impact of the tariffs on anything and everything, from a new building project, and by the way, thank you to Town Meeting and to the citizens of the town and all of those that worked on behalf of it. We don't know what the impact is gonna be on anything else that may, uh, come because of the tariff situation. I think we're probably a few months from seeing that. So that continues to mean we are gonna scale back. Um, fact, we cut 19 positions last year, 17 from the ESAR funds, grant funds went away, and two others. Um, this year, we're gonna be in the vicinity of six to eight positions. Um, we will continue to not impact the classroom, but here's the change. The change is that since this budget was passed in, since this budget's been vetted, since this budget has gone through approval, um, we are seeing further increased enrollment in our elementary grades. Um, and that's move-in families. Our shelters, by the way, are declining in number, and we have documentation, verbal and written, that these two shelters will be closed prior to the beginning of the next academic year. Now, it's important to remember that every single time a student leaves this community and they are going from a shelter to a actual placement, or their house unfortunately has a house fire, wherever that student is living, 50% of the price tag for transportation belongs to the taxpayers of Stoughton, or the school budget. It's called the McKinney-Vento Act. It's a federal act. So what's happening right now is that we're seeing a significant number of our shelter students staying in Stoughton through the remainder of the year, but moving to Fall River, Ubedford, Mansfield, you name it. One student from Fall River back to Stoughton is $20,000 a month. $10,000 to the Stoughton budget, $10,000 to the Fall River budget. That's what we're talking about in terms of what's going on, um, with budgets and issues. Our Chapter 70 funding is, uh, a total increase from the budget, is 6.98 million, as printed in the warrant, 67,256,250 and 86 cents. Um, and that will not get us to a full-level services budget for the second consecutive year. Um, satisfying our minimum spending requirements, restoring services and positions, um, yes, the K-PARs are in the budget, um, in terms of prioritizing that. Retaining, uh, retain mostly level services from FY '25 as much as we can. I will still be cutting in the vicinity of $1.2 billion. And by cutting, I mean from what we ask for and need versus what we're getting. It's part of the, the shell game of what takes place within budgets. We know that. Um, and we're trying to maintain our qualified, uh, staff so that we can open, um, in the, uh, in the fall. Uh, this is just the basic enrollment breakdown. This is as of January, 3734. You can see that the hi, uh, high school, which was, uh, built for 1,080, um, is at 1,097, and actually, I believe this month, we're over 1,100. Um, so the churn, or the constantity out of students is taking place regularly. The next slide is harder for you to see, and I apologize, but this is the NESDEC enrollment. This is a third-party, basically, uh, organization that takes our numbers, birth rates, all, all of the permits that go out. This report, by the way, is available on our website, and was, part of it was published as part of the secondary information that you have in book number, I bel, in the, in the line items. We are slated, over the next 10 years, to increase by 288 students, or about 7%, while the state is actually gonna be seeing a 7% decline. Stoughton, you are a destination. We are on the map. This is a place where people wanna live, and when you talk to the parents like I do, it's the train, it's the discussion we just had earlier, it's reasonably priced versus being in the city. Like it or not, those are the things that, um, I, um, get from folks. Our high school, in the near future, is one of our biggest concerns for enrollment. We are slated by 2034, '35 to be at over 1,300 students. That's about 200 more than we have right now, and we're already hurting for space. I'll just leave that for your thoughts and what that really means. So this gets back to the 10-year trend data that you can see. This is, uh, economic disadvantage, low income. As you can see, since 2021, we've decided to see that spike. Um, we're at now 45.4 in this current year of our student body. That's pre-K-12. You'll see in the next one, our English-language learner, again, since that 2021, uh, we've started to see the numbers come up, 14.6, and we expect that number, um, to continue, um, to go up. Um, we are speaking, uh, three major languages, are, uh, Brazilian Portuguese, um, Spanish, um, and Haitian Creole, um, but we have about, uh, 20 other languages added to that, including a bunch of singleton, um, languages, um, that we're required to do translations, et cetera. And this is the students with disabilities, this is students of Special Education. As you can see, we're hovering right around that 20% number. As of this week, we're at exactly 20%. We've had over 105 students, um, through the process, asked for testing, um, about, uh, learning challenges that the students may be having, uh, within our schools. Um, and then lastly, the foundation budget numbers, um, because of the increase in all of those other numbers I just mentioned, the economic disadvantage, uh, ELL, Special Education, we're in group number nine, um, and you'll see that in that blue box in the middle. Um, you get the SOA money based on this formula. So the higher group number you're in, from one through, uh, 12, the more money we're getting. This year, currently, we're getting $730 per student. You might hear the number 150 or 75. The community I came, came from would be getting 150 students, uh, $150 per student increase from the state. We're getting 730 this year. And then, uh, the breakdown of, uh, your three public, uh, schools within the, the Town of Stoughton, where students go, um, as you can see, there, there has been somewhat of a, um, decline in, uh, in the next one, in, in the enrollment at, um, Southeastern, um, where we are, um, um, again, going from about 123 students, it looks to about 110. That number will fluctuate somewhat. Um, and again, um, the YAGI, uh, kind of maintaining, uh, the typical single digits numbers that we, um, see, uh, for students, uh, attending the schools. I did wanna mention a couple of things that are not up there real quickly. I mentioned earlier, not counting for private school students, which there are a significant number of students who go to private schools and/or homeschooling. There are 238 students that go to vocational technical education, charter schools, or out-of-district public schools. Our total out-of-district is 55 students as of this week, of which, um, almost 30 of them attend, um, public, um, Special Education, uh, collaboratives. And then lastly, I was asked earlier to, to ask on a question, so that you know what we are seeing within our, all of our schools, is that we are a 56% minority-majority school district. Um, and that number starts in '21, as you could see from the data I had up earlier, and will continue to grow, um, over the next, um, 10 years. One of the focus points that I think is important for us is where I started and I'll end. We don't know what's really happening at the federal government level. We just don't know. Um, we know that the cut to USDOE, um, could actually lead to more money coming back to the states, or not. Um, there are 4,000 employees in that department. Um, I can assure you that as the Superintendent of Schools, I struggle with that department as a professional every day, uh, some of the things that I'm asked to do, but as those things are being cut, what does that really mean in terms of funding coming back to either Stoughton Public Schools or even the Commonwealth of Massachusetts? Here's what I will, uh, will end with, and I was quoted the other day in a paper. Our kids are smarter today, they're better today, they're doing great things today, and don't let anybody else tell you differently. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Biaida. Okay, this time, we're gonna go back to the holds. Okay, I'm gonna ask Deputy Moderator to come up. I'm gonna recuse myself from a couple of these, and she's gonna take over for a few of these, too. Mr. Combe, identify yourself. You have a point of order?
When you start over the budget, would you please give the page when you're doing this, too, so we can stay in tune with you? Page, account, just like Biz did it.
Right.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Do your best. Just explaining the hold.
All right. So, um, what we're gonna do, I know there was a little bit of confusion about how the holds are being handled, and I'm just gonna clarify that. I do, I believe I have the names of the people who placed the hold, so we will hear from those people first, and then if there's anyone additional who didn't call out hold and have their name written down on Monday, um, we will give you a chance to bring that forward. I would encourage, in fact, I would strongly encourage anyone who knows that they placed a hold, please position yourself near a microphone, so that we aren't spending time getting to and from the microphones. And I'm also gonna ask that when you approach the microphone with your hold, just so, to make it easier for, um, the folks up here who may be responding to it, please let us know if you put a hold because you have a question or a clarification, or if you placed a hold because you're gonna propose an amendment. So the budget is the one place where we can make amendments from the floor, and it will help to know in a, like, before you speak, you say your name and precinct number, and that you placed your hold because you have a question or clarification, or you've placed your hold because you have a proposed amendment. That'll just help everyone know what's coming and know what they're listening for. Yep. Okay. Why don't I try to do it, and if I need help, I'll holler for you? Thanks. And Biz, did you also write down the people who placed holds? Okay. Okay. So we'll, if you have, I, I have my notes, but in case you have something different, just let me know. All right. So the first department that we have a hold on is Department 123, which is the Town Manager, and that can be found on page 83. And I noted holds from Lisa Lyons and Juan Fox.
Okay, Juan Fox, Precinct 1. I have a question. And this is regard to the Communications Coordinator on page 83. And it shows an increase in cost of 39.8%. And I'm not clear on the understanding of the note, footnote, which says, "Partial budget move to assist Assistant Town Account/Staff Accountant?" With a question mark. "Annual Audit Line by Vote of Town Meeting in November." Could I get a, an explanation of that a little bit better, please?
Through you, Madam Moderator. That individual for that position was hired November of last year. So our Director of Finance came before Town Meeting in the fall and asked that a portion of that money be transferred over to accounting to cover for, for an additional staff person in accounting. So the starting point for last year should not be 40, in, in real life, it would not be $46,000, it would be $62,000, except we took money out of that account, Town Meeting approved it, to fund the position in accounting mid-year.
Okay, hi. I just have--
Oh, identify yourself, please.
Lisa Lyons, Precinct 2. In order to save time, once we've already identified ourselves, should we have to keep doing that?
We do need to do it because that is, one, for anyone who may not be able to see you clearly in the room, and, two, because it's on smack, so they, you know, may be seeing the back of your head from that camera and may not be sure who you are.
No problem. Okay. So just to clarify, we're doing the Town Manager's budget right now?
Correct. On page 83.
So I'm looking to pull, well, can I do a point of order first, because I'm not sure how to do this? So if I want to pull line items, do I need to make a motion now, or do I just say what I'm looking to do?
So you are wanting to, when you say to pull a line item, do you mean to zero out an item in the budget?
Correct.
So you would make a motion to amend?
Okay. Thank you. So I would like to make a motion to amend the Town Manager's budget, to reduce that budget by $94,383.48. And that would be made up for, to pull, for clarification purposes, the Communications Coordinator for purposes of, we pay our department heads a lot of money, a very lot of money. So I'm looking to--
I think it would be helpful if you state what the, what the change would be.
Okay. So the change would be for that Communications Coordinator to eliminate that position, which would bring her salary of $64,383.48 down to zero, because I'm looking to eliminate the need for that position.
Yeah, the proposed amendment--
I'm looking to save the taxpayers' money.
Would be to zero out that item in the budget. Let me confer with Town Council about what happens next. Okay. So per the advice of Town Council, we, we do have two ways that we could do this. We could wait and vote on all of the potential amendments after they have been heard. The recommendation is that we take amendments as they come, because it's while we're still thinking about it, and we don't have to go back and remind ourselves what we were talking about and where the amendment came from. And so being the acting moderator at this moment, I am going to opt that we do that. And so this will function like another amendment. So amendment, an amendment, proposed amendment has been made, a motion to, a motion to amend has been made. It will require a second, and then we will have time to debate it, and then we will vote on whether to amend this budget in the way that has been proposed. And I believe-- That'll be a simple majority? And it will require a simple majority to either make or, it would require a simple majority in order to make that amendment.
Okay. And then the second piece to--
Wait, 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 wait. You made an amendment, you proposed an amendment, so the question is whether we have a second? I guess Elliot Hanson first. Can you please repeat the amount? So if you can just say, I propose that we amend Budget Number 123 to reduce--
Okay. But I, I didn't finish making the motion, because as, as the original motion was for $94,383.48, and I just gave you one piece of that. There's a second piece to that.
Okay.
So as a point of order, I was trying to ask you, when would you like me to mention the second piece as part of the amendment? So do you want me to do a motion for each piece or do it together?
I would like you to restate the amendment, and how about saying that you're making a motion to amend this department by X amount, and that would come from, to reduce it by X amount with, say, reduce it by $100, $50 coming from this line item and $50 coming from this line item.
Okay. Ready? Okay. So I make a motion to reduce the Town Manager budget, Department 123, by $94,383.48, to come from the Communications Coordinator for a sum of $64,383.48. And on the next page, page 84, the Equal Opportunity Consultant for $30,000.
Lisa, Ms. Lyons, would you repeat the dollar amount from the Communications Coordinator?
That amount is $64,383.48.
All right. Thank you. And so now, do we have a second on this? I'm going to take Elliot again, because I heard him the first time. All right. So now we have the ability to, at the time and the ability to debate this proposed amendment. I'm going to encourage people to, again, use the pro and con microphones. So if you are in favor of the amendment, you would speak at a pro microphone, saying, "I support amending this budget, reducing it in the way that was described." And if you do not support reducing the budget in the way that was described, you'd speak at a con microphone.
Can I, can I ask a point of order? Just because this is new to me still. So as the proponent of the amended motion, do I state my position on the amended motion at the time of making it? Or do I get in front of a mic, too?
Why don't you do that right now? Can, can you give us a two-minute?
Less than two minutes.
Fantastic.
Okay.
Excuse me, Madam Moderator, point of order? Sorry. If people have questions about the amendment, when do they ask them? Since we're going right into pro-con debate.
Do, do we have technical questions?
People do have questions.
All right. Well, let's do it like a standard flow of an article, then. Trying to move things quickly, but it's, sometimes that makes it more slow. We will hear a brief presentation, we'll take technical questions, and then we'll hear pro-con, and then we will vote on whether or not to amend this budget.
Okay. So with regard to the Communications Coordinator position, as I stated earlier, we, we pay our department heads, our Town Manager, and our Select Board guides all these departments with hopefully forthcoming policies. And, and they are fully capable of managing communication in this town. And, and given that we should be looking towards saving the taxpayers' money, and given that we just recently had confusion on just the recent meetings that were scheduled for a Monday night, and then they were moved to Tuesday night, and some of the information was put on the website, and some of it was put in the email, but not in a complete package, I, I think our department heads and Town Manager can manage through his office the communication we need. We're not pumping out 24/7 news that we need to spend not only the $64,383.48, but all the benefits and related health insurance, et cetera. So that's on that position. And briefly, on the Equal Opportunity Consultant position, same, same issue there. We pay our department heads, and we have line items for consultants galore in this town, legal and otherwise, that this is another extraneous expense that we don't need, and that's it.
Thank you. All right. So technical questions about the amendment. Please approach a microphone? Ms. Ransovino, I don't know what you're pointing at.
Just a, just a point of order, a point of information. Usually, you present a, a, a motion. Should you allow the person who put the budget forward to give his response, which might answer a lot of questions that people might have? That's all I wanted to bring up.
Yes. And I have a sense that people's questions would bring forth the answers, but how about we let you speak to whatever you think might be pertinent and might answer some of these folks' questions before they have to be asked?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. We're going to be asked a lot of questions from individuals tonight that are members of the Finance Committee, who heard hours and hours and hours of testimony answering these very same questions. But I'd be happy to do it all night. I find it interesting that the two cuts the gentle lady would like to make, our community outreach, an opportunity, equal opportunity for residents. We serve the taxpayers as well, and that's why we have these two departments. The body, this body, the legislative body, voted for this position last year. We recruited this person, and this young lady is under an employment agreement, but we can have the debate. She adds tremendous value, communication with you and the community. You know you get more letters to Town Meeting Representatives than ever before. That's our attempt to accelerate our level of transparency and communication. These two items the lady wishes to cut are to serve the community, the taxpayers. And this body approved this position a year ago, and this position is under an employment agreement. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Manager. All right. Questions? I saw Sandra Souza and--
Sandra Souza, Precinct 1. That was primarily my question. So both of these positions are currently filled by individuals. So what would the ramifications be? We, if we were to cut those positions, what, what happens? Obviously, you know, those, those people wouldn't, what would happen? I'm going to ask you what would happen--
Thank you for asking.
What would, what would the town, what position would the town be in, too, if the contract is current, currently in place, and then there's no funding? Thank you.
Sure. All contracts are subject to appropriation, so we wouldn't be able to fund it, and then we'd be open to a lawsuit for breach of contract. You're going to see that many times with many of the cuts that are going to be proposed tonight, all being salaries. So that's the first thing. The second position is not a person, it's an expense line to support the article programs that the body just funded, or that just passed. So the body just passed the previous article. The $30,000 is the money that they pointed out is in my budget to fund their programs.
Ms. Dino?
Good evening. My name is Dawn Dino. I'm from Precinct Number 4. And I have a question on that proposal that our, what Lisa Lyons had said. If we're treating the town of Stoughton like a business, and you guys are the Board of Directors, and we're your stockholders, and you have to answer to us, as far as the expense of that Communications Communicator, when you brought up Mr. Coulter, two, a person can do two jobs, can that job be done by somebody else as well as just, just doing that? Because I'm sorry, I just didn't understand. I'm, I'm, nothing against anything, just wanted to know.
No, I really appreciate that question. We, our primary strategy is to command jobs whenever possible. As I pointed out in my opening remarks yesterday, we have 19 fewer employees today than we had two years ago. We'll have five fewer employees next year than we have this year. That's the effect of our consolidation plan. Communicating with residents, communicating with Town Meeting Representatives, is not a job you can tack on to somebody else's responsibilities. In fact, it's a 24-hour-seven job. And not to bring up a touchy point, but this young lady's been working last Friday night, Saturday, Sunday, around the clock with us responding to the legal complaint we just received. We need that kind of help. Things happen in this town every single day that citizens need to know about, and it is a full-time job to keep you informed. If we don't do that, we'll hear that from you, and we should hear that from you. You have a right to know what's going on in your town. The library has a communications person, the schools have a communications person, the town should have a communications person.
And the second question would be to that $30,000 budget as well, to see if, if that's something that can be done by another person as well. And that's it. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Those, through you, Madam Moderator. That's not a, a job. Those are the expenses associated with the programs that the committee you just supported. That's to pay for those programs.
Do you, you have a technical question?
Me?
Yes.
Yeah. I'm against this article--
Wait, 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 wait. That's a, that's a pro-con statement. Do you have a question?
No, I got, I'm a--
Okay. Hang on just a moment.
I do.
Do you have a technical question? Yes, please identify yourself.
Thank you very much. Through you, David Lurie, Precinct 6. This is a math question I have for the Finance Director, if that's okay through you.
Yes.
It's on page 77. It's the budget summary. The second line down is, is labeled "New Growth." It shows that the recap was approved at $1,705,774, and then the estimated for this fiscal year coming up is only $800,000. My experience tells me that we've always averaged out the last five years--
Mr. Lurie, is this germane to the amendment?
It is a question. It's, is--
Wait, hang on one second. Is this about the amendment on the floor?
It's about the revenue contributing--
Or is it about a general question?
It's a revenue question that contributes to the budget. So I need to understand the budget revenue source before I understand what's going on in each of the departments.
But is it, is it specifically relevant to--
It's relevant--
But is it specifically relevant to the proposed amendment to reduce this specific budget?
It's absolutely relevant. It's relevant to every single budget, every single one, including the government.
So if it's relevant to every single budget, I'm going to ask you, or every single element, I think it is a question that needs to come at a different time, not at the time of discussing this amendment.
There won't be any other time to ask it. There won't be any other time. We finish the budget and then we vote it.
Point of information, Madam Moderator.
Yes.
What you're about to experience and what the body's about to experience was the first night of the Finance Committee where the gentleman said, "If I don't get a complimentary answer to this question, I am pulling every salary increase and making town meeting way in whatever."
Mr. Coulter, I understand that many of these things have been heard and debated and I really encourage folks to focus on the specific task that we have at hand so that we can move this process along and complete the business.
It's not a complicated question.
I think you have a general question, not about the $94,383.48.
Can you tell me when?
Well, I believe that you have several holds and so one of those might be a more appropriate time to bring that forward.
I'm not sure.
Because I would really like us to be able to focus on this amendment, so a question about the amendment itself.
I'm just asking for your help. Where would you like me to bring that up again?
I think you could bring that up anywhere where we're not discussing a very specific amendment. If you could bring it... I don't know what your question is, so it's hard for me to say, but I think at a point, it sounds like it's a general question about the budget, not a question about the amendment.
It's a relevant question to every budget. So which budget do you want me to ask?
Well, let me consult with Town Council. On the advice of Town Council, we will hear the question now, but we will not be hearing questions repeatedly, the same question or the same style of question, the same basic question on multiple departments.
It's a very, very specific question. Very, very specific.
Please go ahead.
If we got $1,705,774 in what's shown up on that page and our estimated is $800,000, why didn't that get averaged out above $800,000 based on the five-year average that we've always seen? Wouldn't it be over $900,000? Why is it only $800,000?
I believe this is to you, Finance Director.
So we are going to entertain this question.
It has come to me, this has been repeated multiple times to Mr. Lurie and other members, that the new growth is an estimated new growth. During the fiscal year 2025, when we set our tax rate, we had a large amount of new growth based on what's called TIFs or Tax Incentive Programs. That came off the books. The estimate on tax incentive programs was $976,000 roughly. I cannot add a one-time revenue source into an estimated new growth. History shows estimated new growth is $800,000 in the general area for the last 10 years. That's why new growth does not get increased. Additionally, we are required to present a balanced budget. We do not vote revenue. The town has presented management, psych board, finance committee altogether. We presented a balanced budget to the town meeting to make their decisions on. Addition to that, there's a question as to whether or not we're spending all the money. Page 77, as Mr. Lurie had pointed out, in the first column, per recap approval, we have what's called excess capacity of $822,898.29. What that represents is taxpayer money that we did not spend. It's in excess capacity. And each year, your excess capacity gets calculated when you do your recap, not before. So yes, we were very conservative. We will continue to be conservative and make sure that we are spending appropriately for the residents of Stoughton. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have any more technical questions about the amendment that is on the floor? The amendment to Budget 123, which is the town manager?
Eric Coleman, Precinct Five. This is on just the money part. If we have breach of, first of all, what is the length of contract on these two employees? When is that contract over?
Madam moderator, there's one employee, Eric, and that's the communication person. The second item that's under discussion here is an expense line item to fund the programs from the previous article. And I believe the employment agreement is at will and can be terminated for cause.
Well, okay. I'm going to go into a third question. For cause, what's cause?
Uh, ever.
It can be what we do tonight. Is that cause?
No, that would not be for cause.
All right.
That would not. It's something she caused.
If I can do this as a second question, what do you expect the breach of contract to cost us if we lose it or what's the probability of us losing it? So I can compare the cost of going either way, a yes or a no on this.
I'm not worried about the breach of contract. I'm worried about the breach of faith. We hired, we recruited a young lady from Brockton in that job because in my view, as your town manager, we were doing a horrible job of communicating. With her work since last November, we've increased significantly the outreach for communication. I do not recommend we make this cut. We've already cut heads, cut full-time employees every year for the past three years. We make those decisions as to where the cuts are to be made. You can fund it or not fund it, but it would not be the appropriate cut I would make.
I'm not going pro or con on this. The question was, if we vote, if we defeat this amendment, then we're paying a certain amount of money. If we say yes to the amendment, then there's going to be breach of, you were referring to a breach of contract that we're going to have to pay. We might have to pay and I want to know what we can be looking at for that.
I wouldn't know. I'm not a lawyer. I have no idea.
Do you have a lawyer here?
It's an employment agreement, not an employment contract, just for the record.
I honestly don't know the contract. I don't have the contract. I have no idea. It would take a significant amount of analysis to figure that out, but I don't have that.
If I may, Madam Moderator, the only reason she's under employment agreement is this body approved the hiring a year ago.
All right. Any other technical questions about this amendment? Yes.
Hi, my name is Patricia McCormick. I'm a new town rep for Precinct Seven. I just have a question, how the equal opportunity consultant for 30K fits into the Stoughton Equal Opportunity Committee at an estimated cost of zero.
Ma'am, this is not a person. It's not an assistant. These are the expenses associated with the programmings that they'll be creating. This is not a person. It's just the expenses associated with the programs they talked about this evening.
Anyone else? All right. Yes, Mr. Guerin.
Jim Guerin, Precinct Six. Thank you, Madam Moderator. In the S E O C presentation, their petition, I think it said that there was no cost to the town for this thing here. Then I believe I heard the town manager say that the $30,000 was to support...
Mr. Guerin, I believe that's the question that was just answered by the town manager.
Would you like me to clarify?
Very briefly, and I would hope that we can all listen and not ask this question again, please.
When the question was asked of the previous team up here for the S E O C, the question was asked, "Where are your expenses for program?" And they answered by saying, "In the town manager's budget." And I've confirmed that. The expenses are coming from the town manager's budget.
I miss that part. Thank you.
No problem. Thanks, Jim.
Very brief technical question, please.
Marina Ryan, Precinct Seven. So I have a question about DEI expense, $30,000. So earlier...
Marina, is this different from the question that has just been answered twice?
Question.
Sorry.
Yes.
Thank you.
Why is it $30,000? We were told that DEI is zero.
Okay. That is the same question that has just been answered twice. So we're not going to answer it again. Thank you. All right. Let's move to pro-con. So let's remember that pro means that you are in support of the proposed amendment and con means that you are opposed, you are not in support of the proposed amendment. And my trusty sidekick here is going to tell me which of y'all came to the microphone first.
I was up here earlier and sat down.
Yes, I know, but there have been people who've been up in the back as well. So I understand that it's a little complicated, so we rely on our list here and I do apologize if we get you out of order, but we are doing our best. Yes, please.
Thank you. John Rock, Precinct Three. If you look at page 35 in your book, there's a whole list of proposed budget changes proposed by members of the Finance Committee, of which this is one. And I would like it be noted that they all failed within the Finance Committee. And so now they're being presented again and I hope people will use their discretion and be considerate of the body's time in bringing these before you. The budget's been thoroughly vetted a number of times. There's been hearings. Not to say that we don't have questions, that we shouldn't come up here and ask our questions, but these motions have already been vetted in the Finance Committee and voted down. So to me, it's kind of a waste of our time, but at any rate, so I am against this amendment.
Thank you. And then, Mr. Vintresco?
The budget goes up every year because we've got contractual agreements and services we have to apply. But the only way we help keep the budget intact a little bit, we don't have to create jobs that never existed before. And this one here, I'm not in favor because we're paying $60,000 or $70,000 per person to get the information out. But today, I noticed the town officials going on SMAC studios and telling the town what they do and what they don't do. They can do the same thing and have SMAC come here so that the department doesn't have to waste time going back and forth to the studio so they can get the town information that way. Plus, you've got the town crier that gets the information on Facebook and it's Stoughton Enthusiast, Stoughton News, so that's getting out there. And they can get the information on the Stoughton Shoppers. So even if we spent $1,000 a month to put in a shopper, that's only $12,000 a year. It's a lot cheaper to do it that way than have this position going. I don't see much of anything coming out of this department, so I'm in favor of doing away with this. Thank you.
Thank you. From the floor, Cynthia Walsh.
Cynthia Walsh, Precinct Three. I move the question.
So this will function the same way that it always does. It requires a two-thirds majority to move the question. We'll try it with a voice vote first and then if I can't discern two-thirds, then we will move to clickers. So this is a motion to cut off debate. So you're not approving the amendment, you're not approving the budget, you're saying, "I either yes, I agree that we should cut off debate and move to voting on the amendment," or "No, I think that we should continue to discuss the pros and cons." So those in favor of cutting off debate, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Aye.
Hey. All right. I declare that a vote. That is a pretty clear two-thirds. So we will now move to voting on the proposed amendment, which we do have on the screen. So again, you're not voting on the whole budget, you're voting on whether or not you believe that you support making the changes to Department 123. And please vote now. Voting 1 means yes, you support the amendment. Voting 2 means no, you do not support the amendment, and 3 is abstain. The vote is 33, 33 ayes, 80 no, and 2 abstentions. So the amendment does not pass. So now we're moving on to the next department that has a hold, which is Department 135, the town accountant, and that can be found on page 86. I have recorded holds from Juan Fox and Dave Lurie. Again, please state whether your hold is to ask a question or clarification or to propose an amendment.
Juan Fox, Precinct One, has to ask a question. On the percentage change for the department head and program administrator, 1. Department head is 7%. Program administrator is 16%. 16 kings and I. And the explanation for that is that it is part of it's contractual, part of it is merit. And what I want to know is what part of it is contractual for the department head and how much is merit and why the merit is applied? And how much is contractual for the program administrator? And how much is merit? And also, why for the merit?
Lot of questions there to unpack. I'll do my best. Just as a reminder, we're going to challenge every single increase this evening, so everybody should get comfortable. Dave promised that. We have to look at the accounting department as a whole. When we hired the town accountant, Elizabeth, there was no requirement, and it's not a contract, it's an employment agreement. There's a major difference. There was no requirement in their forensic accounting. No requirement. We were just fortunate that that's her specialty. She teaches finance at Mass Municipal Association. What we discovered and the reason we hired Elizabeth after saying goodbye to our previous town accountant is the books haven't been balanced in 15 years. Yes, your books haven't been balanced in 15 years, going back to the late '90s, early 2000s. The reason you have $12.5 million in free cash is closing out articles that go back 10, 15 years. That's the reason for Elizabeth's pay increase. Now, the assistant town accountant, this body gave her, I'm doing this in memory biz, so stop me. We hired her well below market and the comps that are in your book show that. And we went to the fall town meeting and asked for an increase and we promised her upon hiring her, we would make that claim. And you approved of it. And she is the one that's responsible for putting in place the policies, the procedures, and the processes to make sure that the mistakes of the last 15 years are never made again. So the increase you're looking at, I'm not looking down, I believe it's 36%, is whatever it is. It's based upon the previous year's budget. Mid-year fall town meeting, this body voted to increase it, as we committed to her when we hired her. Those are the two major increases there. In your book, are comps for every one of these positions. We're not paying anybody at the high end, but we've hired so many talented people that have fixed the financial condition of this town to make it what it is today. They at least deserve to be paid at the mean average in the marketplace. And that's why things are going so well. So it's not the increase, the budget is saying it's an increase over FY '25 to FY '25. to FY twenty-six. She got her raise approved by the body mid-year last fall. So it's not an accurate reflection year over year.
Thank you.
Would you like to add to that, Biz, to answer Ron's question more?
Essentially, just clarification, the funding for the internal auditor, which was in the town manager's office at the beginning of 2025, has essentially just been moved over to the, the assistant town accountant. We no longer have an internal auditor position because it wasn't beneficial to the community. We also have our assistant, our staff accountant, and the staff account, I'm sorry, I got it. Staff accountant is the same rate that was being paid to one of the prior employees at 2025. So the raises are, are predicated on three percent, five percent, and what the prior employees were getting paid.
Can I elaborate on my question?
I think we have heard a lot, and I do not-
Didn't have a complete answer.
-think that we need to spend more time on this. I believe that you could contact either of these individuals outside of town meeting and ask for more clarification.
This is for town meeting.
I, I understand that, but this is going on for a very long time, and-
Mine's fast. I haven't answered my question properly yet.
You have asked your question, and both of our representatives who can present the answer have answered it.
Madam Moderator, if I may, this debate happened before the Select Board. This debate happened before the Finance Committee. Both meetings were televised. We then did a show on SMAC where these questions were asked. We then did an information session last week where these questions were asked and answered. These questions are being asked as part of a plan to do exactly what they're doing.
May I respond to that? I don't know what he's talking about in that respect.
I think that everyone's points are being made, and I think that the body understands the different positions that people are coming from.
He just made an allegation against me.
So I'm going to ask that we move along and hear from the other hold that we had.
He just made an allegation against me. Somehow, this is in collusion.
I, this could go back and forth all night, and I don't think that's in our best interests. Thank you. New place to hold?
Yeah, David Lurie, precinct six. I'd like to make a motion. Department 135, Town Accountant and Finance Committee, et cetera, vote was to reduce this budget by fourteen thousand, one hundred dollars, and that's my motion.
And, yeah, so let's follow, if we're making amendments, let's follow the same procedure that you wish to amend the department name, department number, by X amount to come from line item.
The budget will be reduced. It's not going to have to come from anything. It's a Department 135 reduction of fourteen thousand, one hundred dollars, going back to the taxpayers as unexpended revenue. It sits there unexpended. It doesn't have to go anywhere. I'm reducing a budget.
Yes, and where are you reducing it from within, within this-
Department 135 Town Accountant, reducing from the bottom line of the budget.
I believe that you need to state from which pieces of the budget, which line items, where it would come from.
And I, I just said, the bottom line of the budget. The line item is at the bottom of the budget.
Okay, per town council, that is a permitted way to approach this, and then the department itself has to figure out how to make their numbers work if the, if the expense total is, or if the total budget is reduced by that amount. All right.
Point of information? I'm Bart Robert Koch for precinct five.
Thank you.
And the bottom line is, these people are on the Finance Committee, they've asked the question twenty times, and they're here doing it again. You ought to be ashamed of yourself. You're wasting my time. Forty-seven years, I've never seen something like this. Spark it!
Let's settle. I know that frustration is rising, I know that we've all been here for a long time. I really do encourage people to ask, to operate with good intentions and think about the use of the body's time here. We are going to follow protocol because that is the protocol that we have to follow, but I, I really do encourage people to consider the time and consider the likelihood of an amendment passing before they propose it.
So there's a motion and a second on the table, correct? There's a motion and a-
So I've heard your motion, and did we notice a second? Where's our second for that proposed amendment?
We have, there we go.
I don't know your name, but I saw your hand first. Benjamin Carey? Carey? All right, so the motion has been made and seconded to reduce the Town Accountant, Department 135 budget by fourteen thousand, one hundred dollars. I'm gonna-
Point of information?
Dr. Minor?
Just quickly, point of information. Since all of, since this has already been vetted multiple times in multiple locations, per town council, is it possible to, when a motion is made and seconded, that we just move immediately to the vote on that?
No.
Per town council, we would need to move the question and take a vote each time to move the question. We can't-
Okay.
-do it in one fell swoop.
Is it up to the moderator's discretion as to whether or not we can collapse pro-con debate and questioning on this? So-
So I am not going to exercise that discretion for the entire budget, but I will take it on a case-by-case basis.
Yes, okay, I just mean for these-
And I need one more consultation. All right, and just as a further clarification, the question can be moved at any time. We often wait and only allow, and per moderator's discretion, we often wait and only allow moving the question once we've answered technical questions and moved into pro-con. But it is within the moderator's discretion to adjust that. And so at this point, based on the way things are flowing, I will allow us to move the question at any point after a motion has been made and seconded. Thank you.
Madam Moderator? Madam Moderator, may I ask a, may I make a suggestion?
I'm asking to be recognized, and now the town manager wants to be recognized.
No, I, if Dave was up first, I'd bother Dave.
I didn't explain yet exactly what I was doing. All I did was put a motion on the table. That's all I did. I'd like to just explain it, and it would solve a lot.
Two-minute explanation, please.
There's two things in agreement that I have with the town manager and what he's said in many, many meetings, including my own, the meetings that I sat on. One is, is that we reduce our dependency on free cash to zero. Total agreement. Everybody in the room is in agreement of that. Number two, this budget is not a town manager's budget, it's not a Select Board's budget, it's not a school committee budget, and it's not a Finance Committee budget. It's a town meeting budget. We have the final say on the budget, and this is where you finally discuss what's in the best interest. And as far as how Finance Committee conducts its business, there's sixteen members this year who vetted these articles. It's not a sampling of the entire population of Stoughton, and that's why we're able to put in a minority report, because you can never get a full sampling of an entire town of thirty thousand people unless you have both sides represented in the warrant. And it is. If you read the bottom of the same page in thirty-five, you'll see exactly how the minority on Finance Committee felt about it, but it's not a representation of the entire town. That's why we talk about it here. This is where we finally discuss what's in the best interest of the taxpayer. As far as why I'm doing this, the, there was money that came into the budget in the beginning of the year, when we voted last year, it was for an eight-hundred-thousand-dollar increase above the two-and-a-half proposition, two-and-a-half. We went all the way through the budget process in September, October, and not until November did money from heaven come washing in at nine-hundred-and-forty-six, or maybe it was nine-hundred-and-seventy-six thousand, just shy of a million dollars came in extra on top of leveled service. Levelled service was at eight-hundred thousand, not at one-point-seven million. So we are in excess of levelled service at this point, but I haven't seen levelled services, I haven't seen an increase in our services. As a matter of fact, I've seen a decrease in our services because it's harder for me to put out my trash every week. So it's not easier to put out my trash, it's harder, and I don't see all these extra services. And when I started in town meeting, we had a, a beautiful plan for all these wonderful things, when we got a new high school, when we got a sewer project, when we got a new elementary school, when we got a new library. We were told, we were told, we were told-
Mr. Lurie, you were given two minutes to explain your amendment, and the two minutes have passed. And I would also encourage anyone making an amendment to please speak about the specific details of your amendment when you are speaking about it, not about the general overall conversation. Ms. Walsh?
Who make the question?
Second.
All right, we're going to do it by voice vote. Those in favor of moving the question, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That sounds like a two-thirds majority. I declare that a vote. We will now move on to voting on the proposed amendment, which is to reduce Department 135, the Town Accountant, overall budget by fourteen thousand, one hundred dollars. A yes vote here will support that amendment, a no vote will not support that amendment.
Question, can we do this by voice vote? Because I think it's going to be pretty clear.
I think it's best that we have these votes recorded. Thank you. I agree that it would be nice to move faster, but I think in the interest of having it all recorded, it'll be best. All right, so please vote now. Remember, one is yes, in support of the amendment, two is no, not in support of the amendment, and three is to abstain. Please vote now, voting is open. One is yes, two is no, and three is abstain. The vote is thirty-two in favor, eighty-nine opposed, and one abstention, so the amendment does not carry. Moving on to Department 141, the Board of Assessors, which can be found on page eighty-nine. Thank you, and we have two holds there. They are from Juan Fox and Marina Ryans.
Madam Moderator, a simple request, may I request that the, the vote of the Finance Company, Finance Committee be read into the record before we get into this debate? We usually do that, for whatever reason, we're not doing it now. They spent eight nights-
Well, because we're talking about line items within the budget, what the-
No, I'm just talking about the budget department. They voted on the budget department.
I believe that that was read in at the beginning when the original motion was proposed to bring the budget onto the floor. That was Monday, it was like three years ago.
I must have missed it.
Yeah, I hear you.
That's okay.
You're welcome.
Juan Fox, precinct one, I'm pulling back that particular hold.
Okay, thank you. And the other hold that we have? Ms. Ryans?
Marina Ryans, precinct seven, I have, I have a question on the increase, six-point-three percent for, for the header of the assessors. From last year, it was hundred-and-fifteen, this year is hundred-and-twenty-two. What's the reason for that increase?
Madam Moderator?
Yes?
It was part of the contractual understanding when we hired her. She came in under-market, and we promised her by the following year, we would bring her up to mid-market. Just for the record, after her presentation, a couple of months ago, she resigned.
I'd like to propose the amendment to reduce that amount to hundred, back to hundred-and-fifteen.
So, so let's propose our amendment in a standardized way, which is to propose to amend department number, department name?
I'm, I'd like to propose the amendment to the, the assessors department head, I think, account. Department 141, the current amount is hundred-and-twenty-two thousand.
Wait, no, don't, just, just the amendment, to reduce it or increase it by X amount?
To reduce it to hundred-and-fifteen thousand.
Wait, I'm sorry, to reduce it by or reduce it to?
Reduce it to.
Reduce it to, meaning?
I'm reduce, I'd like to reduce the budget for seven thousand, seven thousand.
I just want to make sure that we have the language really clear. Reduce it by that amount, like subtract that amount from it?
Subtract that amount.
Okay, so to reduce it by, can you tell me again the number, please?
Hundred-and-fifteen thousand.
Hundred-and-fifteen thousand?
Madam Moderator, point of information the body would be interested in?
Excuse me? I think the motion that the, my colleague's trying to make is to, she wants to propose to, the motion is to reduce the bottom line of Department 141 Board of Assessors by seven thousand, two-hundred-and-fifty dollars.
Seven thousand, two-hundred-and-fifty dollars. And is that to come from a specific line item?
It's a department, assessors department head.
What is Carolyn, translate?
So the line number, I can't see, I'm sorry, I need to pause this. Can we go from the bottom line?
Madam Moderator, I believe the body would want to know what I want to share for information, if I may.
Yes, please, please speak directly into the microphone. I know that spot is hard because you want to look at everybody, but you got to talk in the mic or we can't hear you.
Thank you so much. The new assessor is beginning on Monday. We recruited him from the town of Duxbury. He's extremely experienced, highly certified, and will need, will need every penny, penny in this line item to recruit this man. And he is under contract, just for your information, as you take this vote.
All right. Is, does this look like the amendment that you are proposing?
Yeah, that's correct.
Because this is what we understand to be there.
Yes, thank you.
To follow protocol, I will allow you two minutes to describe, or to present why you are making this, why you are proposing this amendment, and then we will move into our usual conversation. At any point thereafter, the question can be moved.
So I've checked with my colleagues online and everywhere, and I believe, and to all my knowledge, that hundred-and-twenty-two thousand for the header of the assessors is, the number is too high. So I'll tell you, the average for the header of the assessors office is usually less than a hundred K. So, and I remember being president of FinCom Finance Committee on March nineteenth of this year, and when the new header, director of the assessors was, you know, presented. We were told she's very experienced, so I have no, any doubts, but that the next head of the assessors is experienced. I certainly hope so, but the number is too high. Thank you.
Point of information?
Yes?
Ms. Moderator? Point of information?
Yes, Mr. Jida.
Department 145 is the treasurer's department. 141 is the assessors department. While I have the microphone, if you don't mind, I believe that in many regards, the discussion that's occurring here began at the Board of Selectmen, and I was responsible for that. for that. My interest was to make sure that we had money available for future years. And I looked at all of the departments and reduced the amounts to what was the standard, I believe it was 3% or 5% at the time, and questioned all of them. I sent the same information to the Finance Committee. So I am very sorry that you are all experiencing my suggestion. I would hope that the Finance Committee has the stamina, the members of the Finance Committee, to not perpetuate what has been going on here for the last half hour. We've had several bites at the apple. I do not feel badly about making the suggestions. I have a responsibility to look at the budget as anyone else does. But we have been dealing with this for several months. So, please, I would suggest that we respect this body, and if you have serious objections, then deal with them. But if you don't, there are 140 people, 168 if everyone were here, and we're wasting a lot of time. Please stop.
Thank you, Mr. Jito. Cynthia Walsh?
Cynthia Walsh, Precinct 3, move the question.
It's been moved and seconded to move the question. Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. We will now be voting on the proposed amendment to Department 141, which is to reduce that department budget by $7,250. As, so moving the question passed unanimously. And so we're back to the amendment, in the same way that it has been before. Vote now. 1 is yes, in support of the amendment, 2 is no, not in support of the amendment, 3 is abstain. Voting is open, so please vote now. That vote is 24 in support, 93 opposed, and 1 abstention, so that amendment does not pass. Moving on to our next held.
Madam Moderator?
Yes?
Ed Quigley, Precinct 2, could I ask for a suspension of the rules?
Um, I would need to know, to suspend the rules to do what?
To take all of the minority report at the same time, so we don't spread this over several nights to end up at the same results? It's all printed in the book, people know what they want to cut. Can we suspend the rules, take it all at once, and either say yea or nay?
I don't believe that requires a second. Let me confer with Town Council. Under the advice of Town Council, what, doing that as a suspension of the rules could be extremely complicated and not as time-saving as we're, as I believe you're hoping for. What could happen is that the people who put together, some, a representative of, of the group that put together the Minority Report for the budget, could make a motion that we approve that in its entirety, and we could vote on that as, as a motion to vote on the entire Minority Report as presented on, is that, what's on page 35? So if anyone from that group would like to make that motion, then we could vote on this all at once, rather than voting on it per each department.
One of order?
Yes, Mr. Fox, at the microphone, please.
Juan Fox, Precinct 1, I have questions on all my holds. Is this going to keep me from asking those questions?
No, that would keep any of these proposed amendments from coming forward.
May, may I have either a point of order or a privilege? I'm not sure which it would be categorized as.
Yes.
Okay, it'll be less than 30 seconds. So this whole process could be avoided at the Select Board level if they would vote to reduce the levy. This is the only method to pull money out of the budget.
This is not a point of order, or, this is a commentary, so I would encourage you to communicate that to the members of the Select Board and members of this body in a different fashion.
Well, as a member, I represent.
So, I recognize you to speak, and.
I represent citizens of this town, and I want them to know, there's a method to save the money.
What I'm saying is that this is not the time and the format in which to do that. Thank you very much, you're out of order at this point. Thank you for your time. So, again, what could happen now is that a member of the Finance Committee who put together this Minority Report could move that we take that up in, in its entirety, and we could vote in one fell swoop about each of these, rather than hearing them as amendments on each department.
Point of order, why does it have to be a minority member of the Finance Committee?
Oh, my mistake, it could be anyone. Anyone could make a motion that we take up this Minority Report and vote on it all at once.
Ms., Ms. Moderator, I'd like my father to make the motion, please.
Madam Moderator?
Please identify yourself.
My name is John Anzavino from Precinct 4. Thank you for recognizing me. I would like to make a motion to take under consideration by this body, the items listed on page 35 of your warrant book number one, starting with Department 152 on, because we've already covered the other three. I'm sorry, from 145 on, we did the first three. So my motion is to take under consideration now, all the motions that were made at the Finance Committee meeting, from Departments 145, 152, 155, 161, 210, 220, 241, 300, 541, and 543, and 610.
Second, second.
Mr. Quigley? So moved by John Anzavino, seconded by Mr. Quigley. All those in favor, wait, is that, yeah, we got one?
One of order, one of order, one of order.
I want to vote all these recommendations on. I want to take, yes?
Can you speak at your table microphone?
If the person making the motion is going to present the view of putting these together and having this reduction made, are they presenting on the reasons why they want to actually cut all those budgets? Is that what we're asking them to do?
I made my motion very clear.
Are you representing?
I made my motion very clear.
The motion has been made and seconded. Please pause for one moment.
No.
There, there is no necessity that a presentation be made. There is no legal necessity that the article be presented. There is a necessity that it be made and that it be seconded.
All right, I have a different question.
And then we move into our standard process. Ms. Walsh?
Ms., Ms. Moderator?
All right, so moving the question of taking the Minority Report from Finance Committee, which can be found on page 35, addressing Departments 145 on that list through 610, has been moved and seconded by, moved by Cynthia Walsh.
Second.
Seconded by Bob Cohn. Yeah, I got you. Um, all right, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
I declare that that was at least a 2/3rds majority for aye, so this question has been, will be voted upon, and, Mr. Cohn, do you have a point of order? I'm not going to entertain pro con or questions right now.
I have a question. I adjourn.
Well, we're not adjourning before we do this, you just seconded this motion. All right, so.
I do have a point of order. If, if you, if you, if the body accepts this motion and says, we're gonna, we're gonna put them all together, and it fails, then we're reverting back to each individual, you know, each individual.
No, no, we will not hear these amendments again if they have failed here. We will not hear them and vote on them at, at each.
I don't understand how that could be, because the motion is to bundle them, that's what the motion is.
Per Town Council, we do not need, we will not need to hear and vote on the amendments, department by department, if we address them at once.
And we cannot ask any question or comment on anything in this motion?
We, if people have holds on departments, then for questions, the questions can still be asked.
Okay.
I, I just wanted to clarify that, obviously, Madam Chair, uh, Madam Moderator. My motion was to take all these motions together. These motions were to reduce the budgets, so my motion carries the same way, that it would be going through to take all these motions to reduce, so a yes would be to reduce, a no would be to not reduce them.
Correct.
If there was a hold put on, I'm sure Madam Moderator was well aware and would do that, any hold on any of these budgets, she's certainly going to ask the person who put the hold on if they had any other questions. This is just to stop all the reductions that were listed here. I'm sure you were going to take all the holds to see if it was for reducing or any other question.
Correct.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I don't have any presentation, I think it was clear what I was trying to do.
Thank you. All right, the question has been moved and seconded, so now we are, and has been approved by voice vote, and we are now going into a vote, so.
Madam Chair?
Wait, all right, I, yes, I will, don't start voting yet. Okay, so, voting yes at this time will mean that you are approving, that you are in support of and approving the proposed amendments to the budget that are found on page 35 in your warrant. And to reduce, and they are all motions to reduce the budget in various ways in various departments.
Is there a total on how much we're voting?
Is there a total on how much we're voting?
I don't see a total, so what are we voting?
As printed in the warrant. The information is printed in the warrant and clearly stated. So a yes vote is in support of these budget reductions, and a no vote is not in support of them, and abstaining is, as it always is.
I have a, I have a.
Do we, excuse me, do we feel clear on what we're voting on?
Yes.
Okay.
John? I don't believe this is proper. There's a problem with this, Madam Moderator. There's a serious problem with what we're doing.
I hear your concerns, Mr. Laurie, and I am deferring to Town Council as the expert on the legal acceptance and the legal validity of what we are doing right now. I am not Town Council, I am not an attorney, I am deferring to the individual who can provide that advice.
The person who made the motion assumes that every budget is being asked by the person who held a certain amount, and that's not necessarily true.
It's not really said.
Hearing the person who held, that you told us that if we held.
Point, point of order.
I would like to go home tonight, at some point. What we are voting on is this, if you placed a hold for other reasons, if you had something different that you wanted to ask about or clarify, that, we are not saying that there are no more holds. What we are voting on are these items in the book, so these particular items will not be brought forward again under each individual department.
Point of order, Madam?
Oh, I don't have eyes in the back of my head, all right.
He said the motion's wrong.
One moment, please. So.
What the hell is going on? Are we really going to vote on minority proposals? Point of order, Madam Moderator, are we really going to vote on minority proposals?
It has been moved and seconded that we vote on these action items, yes.
Take the vote.
Uh, Town Council is confirming that our information is accurate in the motion, so that we are taking a vote on what we think we are taking a vote on, so that is an important thing to have correct before we vote.
This is, this is not what I.
All right, so, Mr. Anzavino is the maker of this motion. Once it is up on the screen, I'm going to ask you, please, to confirm, could you come to a mic and please confirm, or disconfirm, that the information is the motion as you made it?
Let me see, I'm waiting to see what it comes up.
If, what I'm understanding.
Can you identify yourself, please, sir?
Oh, yes, excuse me, Joe Scardino, Precinct 1. Essentially, what we're doing by prohibiting, or as I understand what the, what the previous mover anticipates, is that there can be no further adjustments to the budget as a result of this.
No, no, so let me, let me restate this again. We're not, what we are voting on are these items that are printed in your warrant on page 35. Rather than having people come and present them to us under each department category, we're voting on these specific things all at once. That doesn't mean that there can't be other questions about departments that have been held, that doesn't mean that there can't be other proposed amendments or, or anything like that. It just means that these things, which are already pretty clearly stated, we can take in one fell swoop, rather than taking them one by one.
1, 2, 10, 220, 241.
Thank you, Madam Moderator, for that clarification.
You're welcome.
541, 543, and 610, as printed on page 35. Motion to amend the budget to reduce. That is correct, Madam Moderator.
All right.
That's my motion.
Thank you very much. So, let me reiterate, that voting yes is voting to approve these departments and cuts to the budget. Voting no is to not approve that, and voting 3 is to abstain. Let me, yep, all right, voting is open now, so please make your vote. Again, 1 is yes, 2 is no, 3 is to abstain. Make sure you vote before you hand in your clicker, please. I know. All right, the vote on this is 34 yes, 76 no, and five abstentions. This vote does not pass. It does not carry.
Ms. Moderator?
Ah.
I'd like to adjourn this meeting tonight till Monday night at 7:00 PM.
Seconded by a lot. Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
All right, thank you very much. We will see you back here on Monday.